Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for November twentieth. Councilmember Kirkpatrick and I were just chatting about how nice it is to see a full room of civically engaged people. So, thank you all for being here tonight. A couple of comments before we get started with our open comment period. We do still have members of the public and members of staff joining virtually. So, I continue to toggle back and forth between my Zoom screen and those of you here in person. So, please just give me some grace as I do that. And then we take breaks every ninety to one hundred and twenty minutes between items as we're able. Alright, so we begin every meeting with a, an open comment period. This is an opportunity for anyone from the public who would like to speak to an item. We will otherwise not be taking public testimony on later during a public hearing. Each person has up to four minutes to speak for a total of twenty minutes and I'll be keeping track of time. I use a variety of methods. There's a clock on the wall and then we have this little stoplight right here. And I also will verbally acknowledge when you're, you're close or at your time. Please don't worry if I speak over you. I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I want to be sure that we have a chance for everybody to speak who would like to speak. Your comments are to be directed at me as the presiding officer. And as always, I just ask that you be respectful in delivering those comments. We don't respond actively during open comment, but if you do have items that you'd like follow up on, we'll make sure that the clerk has your information and either staff or the council will follow up and get back to you. We are invited to speak in the order that you've signed up. I will ask our clerk Geisler, once I've made the initial call for people joining virtually. And otherwise, we'll use this sheet here in my hand and we'll alternate back and forth as needed. It looks like we do have one person in the queue. So, I think with that, we will go ahead and get started and I will call Cory Jacob up to the front.
Mr. Jacobs.
Welcome and please introduce yourself and then you have up to four minutes.
I had a bind another way to do this, but unfortunately this is a visual representation since I only have four minutes to speak and it's not enough time to cover the issues that I was trying to cover. But due to disabilities, I'm completely locked out of remote communication. I was unaware of the November sixth meeting about the camping ordinance. As a person with homeless, that's been homeless for six and a half years, living in a van where I complied with all the parking rules within the city. And I've done my due diligence to keep the areas clean where I am, whether it's my trash or not. I have been backed in the corner since the start of COVID where cities, county and state policies have been systematically destroying my life and ability to live. I have physical scars across my abdomen of the harm being done by your policies because you disregard the needs and realities for people that are deemed a bottom class citizen. Those people with disabilities and homeless. I've been locked out of housing, not by choice, but the way people treat me and the way they do their conduct towards me. I have no way around it. I don't have the financial means to get into kind of housing I need. I have exhausted all state services and there are no services available to me that will get me back into housing. Not one, not even going outside the box trying to do it through GoFundMe, for example. I've been surviving in that van for six and a half years and it's getting unbearable. But when I start dealing with policies like this that are basically systematically making homelessness illegal, when some of us who are homeless are not homeless by choice, we are doing this to be disruptive to the public. We're not doing it because we don't want to follow the rules. Some of us just don't have any other choice. But when you take that choice away from us, that violates our constitutional right to be able to sleep in a public space or eat in a public space that involves, in my case, living in a van because as a disability, I am not able to live outside a shelter that can't be locked. And I've tried to share this information with at least one of the city councilmen because of the time limit. And that city councilman had stated to me, I will not be allowed to sleep in my van. I have not done anything wrong. I have not broken any laws willingly. And yet I'm being told that I'm not going to be allowed to live. I need this stopped. And I do understand that police do need the tools to deal with the unruly members of the homeless community. And these rules need to be more specifically focused to the specific behaviors of those people like camping in porta potties, the bathrooms, the shelters themselves that interfere with the other public's right to enjoy those public spaces. But when, at a certain point, when responsibilities that have been done to us, when does it become the government's right to punish us for somebody else's conduct towards us? All I want to do is live. I have the same rights as you'd live.
Cory, it's time to wrap up, but do you have a final quick comment?
The point I'm trying to make is, on the West Coast, Supreme Court ruling said that blanket no camping ordinances are unconstitutional flat out because of the torture of the eighth, under the eighth amendment.
Thank you, your time is up.
Well.
Thank you. Alright. Looking to the online queue. I don't see a hand anymore. Alright, Lisa Miller. Please introduce yourself and you have four minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name's Lisa Miller. Thank you for listening to my comments. I know that the council is considering making the public comment shorter. So, we decided out of respect for all of you to have one person from our neighborhood speak on the behalf of turning the Roth into a homeless shelter. So, I've been a resident, so all these people behind me represent our neighborhood. I've been a resident of the East Side Neighborhood for going on sixteen years now. Prior to moving to my current home, I lived in this Latterly Park Neighborhood for five years. What I want you to know about me is that I'm very compassionate for our homeless friends. But I also want you to know, and I also want you to know that I enjoy living in the East Side Neighborhood. And I really want to stay there. My husband and I have worked hard to care for our home and living in, on the East Side is, has a lot of perks. Number one, it's affordable. It's also convenient and close to my job at Mayo Clinic.
Sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Miller, but we haven't started the clock.
Okay, oh, I'll slow down then. Another perk is I have some pretty awesome neighbors and I feel safe in my neighborhood. With that said, we are a low income, not well-connected neighborhood that has struggled to find a voice when it comes to decisions made by the county and the city. We simply don't feel heard. Driving into our neighborhood, it's obvious which homes are owner occupied and which aren't. Many of our rental properties are rundown and quite honestly, eyesores. We are plagued with chopped up old homes made into several different apartments that are unkept and uncared for by the owners. I cringe every time a home goes up for sale in my neighborhood because it tends to end up becoming a rental. Why am I pointing out all of these, these negative things? It's because the East Side Neighborhood already has its challenges. We already housed the Federal Medical Center and I've heard that our neighborhood had no voice in that decision either. I've spoken to some of my neighbors who lived through that transition and I heard what happened to home values. Now with, now without any neighborhood involvement, the county is again proposing to make significant changes to our neighborhood with absolutely no neighborhood involvement. Why was our neighborhood excluded in these talks to turn Roth into an overnight homeless shelter? What I ask is this, is a twelve hour overnight homeless shelter what our homeless friends actually need? Does it make sense where the county plans to have it? Is it humane to ask the homeless to travel with all of their belongings in gear over, in the dead of winter and bitter cold temperatures, more than a half a mile from the current day shelter, the landing? Why was the initial proposed site on Fourth Street, close to the landing, not approved? What about neighborhood safety? The current day and overnight shelters are in an area that are well lit and quite visible. The Roth is not well lit and it butts up to Oakwood Cemetery, which if you've, if any of you have ever walked in that area, and I have many times, it's very, very dark up there. What will happen when we push eighty to one hundred and twenty? We've heard numbers up to three hundred homeless people out into our neighborhood at eight AM every day. These are all questions that the East Side Neighbors want answered. Doesn't it make more sense to invest in a larger scale twenty-four hour homeless shelter such as Avivo Villages that I've read about in the Twin Cities? Or if not a twenty-four hour shelter, then a shelter that is in close proximity to the current day shelter? Thank you for listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Alright, and just a reminder, if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine to raise your hand. Alright, Adam Busby. Okay, Casey McGregor.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor and Council, Casey McGregor. The city has just received two hundred and five million plus interest in sales tax revenue for over the twenty-four years. However, the city council seems to be repaying its voters by silencing them. This is a huge disappointment and a clear indication of how the council values the voices of citizens. The council has promoted increased taxing and reducing the allotted time for citizens to speak to their elected officials. This is unacceptable. As a taxpayer in the city, I have the right to speak to my representatives for more than four minutes a month. I believe I should get four minutes every meeting. This is the time to dialogue and hold our elected officials accountable for their actions. If the county or the city staff is unhappy with their job or its current hours, they should try a different approach or resign. After all, the bosses are the voters. If you cannot do your job, you should quit. It is disappointing to see such a lack of empathy from the council, especially considering their decisions impact the lives of citizens like myself who work long hours to make ends meet. Seven PM is what works best for voters. The plan to take away speaking time and change the start time of council after receiving two hundred and five million dollars from the voters is a big middle finger, an F you to the voters who just gave you more money. After receiving tax dollars, look at the city's first lie. We're going to make housing more affordable. Well, if you look at F eight, four hundred and seventy per Boulevard tree is mind blowing crazy. There is no way planting a tree should cost this much money. I have planted a lot of trees in my lifetime. I will plant your trees for half. This, this little stuff matters. The more fees, the more expenses to building homes, the higher prices will have to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, John Kresel. Alright, and Mr. Busby, thank you for passing. I did see that you spoke earlier this month, so appreciate that. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during open comment? Alright, we will close open comment and officially call the meeting to order.
President, there was a paper handed to you.
It's G four, thank you. Alright, Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Bransford.
Here.
Councilmember Wal.
Here.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Dennis.
Here.
Council President Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Norton.
Present.
Alright, thank you, and I will turn it over to our city administrator, Allison Zelmz, for her report.
Thank you, Council President, councilmembers, mayor, members of the public. We always start the report by thanking our teammates for doing their work with customer service in mind, with respect, integrity, safety and excellence in all they do. So, just thank you to all our teammates that are out there making sure to deliver service to the community. We appreciate you. I have some good news for transit riders that effective starting today, the transit center will be reopening. So, all of those transfers that happen at this, at the bus stands located from Second Street Southwest between South Broadway Avenue and Fourth Avenue will be happening back in those locations. None of RPT's routes will be stopping at Central Park anymore. Maps are available at rptride.com and of course, we encourage people to try transit. So, just want people to be aware of that. We'll be back at more of that normal schedule. Also, we had talked about this earlier, but always a great to have different opportunities to share that the city council at their last meeting did expand free parking in downtown ramps during the holiday season. So, from now through January first, the extended free during the day already was free for one hour during the day, but during the holiday season will be two hours free in the parking ramps. This does not apply to the parking meters, those same rules would still apply. But as always, the ramps are free on weekends and after five. So, if you get there at three oh one, that's after five sort of with two hours free. And the after five and weekends free also applies to on-street meters. So, we always want people to be aware of the opportunities downtown. But it is important to exit by three AM if you are downtown in order to avoid an overnight parking charge. Lime services are also paused over the winter. We haven't had much precipitation recently, but all of those Lime e-bikes and electric scooters are in the collection phase. They are a nice green alternative for folks who are more pedestrian oriented and are able to utilize those. But they'll be returning in spring of twenty twenty-four. If you see something, there is a QR code on those. If you are open to helping us out, you don't have to have the app or be a rider to scan that code and send in the location. You don't have to be registered. We'll make sure that Lime comes and gathers those up. And we do have the Eagle Ridge Playground renovation, virtual open houses on November twenty-seventh noon to one and six thirty to seven thirty, looking at some continued investment through the Parks Referendum over at the Eagle Ridge Playground, renovating that older equipment into something newer, more vibrant for the community and looking for input on that to get to the final design. So, with that, I would turn it back to the mayor.
Very exciting. Alright, Mayor Norton, go ahead.
Alright, let me get my. There we go. I'm not going to report long this evening, you'll be happy to know. We have a very full agenda and I don't want to keep you here too late. So, I do want to announce the Mayor's Medal of Honor. This is the fortieth anniversary of Mayor's Medal of Honor. You are all invited to attend. It is going to be on December first for lunch. And so, if you go to the city's website, under Mayor's Medal of Honor, there's a place where you can register and anyone in the community is welcome to come. It's a nice lunch. We keep the prices pretty reasonable for that. So, feel free to sign up and join us for the fortieth year celebration. And if you have any trouble with the website, Michonne Rogers, my executive assistant's number is up there in her email. You can give her a call and she will register for you. It's a, it's a new registration app and we're having a little struggle. Some people are having struggles with it. So, feel free to call her and she'll get you registered. Just thought I'd mention, here comes Santa Claus is an annual downtown celebration and it happens on Friday this year. I wanted to make note of this because last year they tried it and they did it a different day. They're going back to this Friday, the twenty-fourth from two to four, two to five. There will be Santa rescued. He seems to always find his way to the wrong building and gets stuck on the roof. So, we rescue him every year. But also there'll be activities for children and the whole family downtown at the Chateau Theater and in Peace Plaza. So, just encourage folks for some fun, free activities, bring your family down during the day. And I might just mention here too, we're going to once again do the second annual New Year's Eve celebration. Last year, it started, I don't have the details yet, I'll have it up for the next meeting. But roughly mid-afternoon, free for children, tons of activities. And then evening, there were free concerts for anyone in the community. So, if you don't want to plan your own New Year's Eve party, we've got one planned for you. So, come on down to Mayo Civic Center for that, but I'll get details on a slide next month. I want to, one last shot, I'm already, I'm already interviewing people for boards and commissions, but I'm just going to let you know one more time. Heritage Preservation has four openings. That's the largest opening ever since I've been here on a board and commission, but four at once. The Music Board, Pet and Bike Commission has two openings, Planning and Zoning, Police Policy Oversight has two and the, and the Public Utility Board. So, if you are interested in one of those boards, know someone who might be good at one of those issues, please tell them to call quickly and get their name in. As I said, I've already started interviews, but I'll continue them for the next few weeks and we hope to have those before the board so that folks can be ready to go in January. These would be for the twenty twenty-four year. Lastly, and this is where I'm not going to go into details, but I, I did want to mention, I attended the National League of Cities Conference. I'm going to pass this down. I, this is the annual business meeting and I believe Administrator Zelmz has one at her ends and maybe she could pass it down the other way. I set one right in front of you, maybe it got picked up. No, the NLC, yes, that. So, when we come to National League of Cities, one of the opportunities is for voting and I thought I would share with folks on the city council, if they're interested on what resolutions were passed. So, I went to that, just came home yesterday from that event and also had reported last time that I was on a delegation to China for the US-China Heartland delegation. There were six mayors that attended, a couple of scientists and a couple of business folks. On the table over there, if you want to look on a break, are goodies. Every city we went to, people exchanged gifts. So, we gave them a gift and they gave one to us. They are not for the mayor, they're for the city. So, I wanted you to be able to see the lovely gifts. Some of them are quite beautiful. There's one cute little terracotta soldier. And for folks, we have five sister cities in Rochester and one of them actually is in China and they came to one of our meetings so that we could have an exchange. They were, they visited our town in March last year, but we were able to sit and meet with them. And they're, that city, Xianyang is very close to the Terracotta Soldiers, just right outside of their town. So, they gave us a couple of gifts, one of which was over there. So, take a peek at those. We'll do a display in the cabinet, but I will give a different report when I can finally download my pictures just to show you, really, if you haven't been to China, what China looks like. It was very different than I expected and the things that we talked about there that might come, might build relationships on a sub-national level with our sister city and other cities in China. So, I will pause there and just tell the board, the city council, I do have information like I always do when I travel. I share some in your boxes, but I also have it all up on my desk. So, if you're interested in looking at some particular information or you have questions about some of the workshops, I'm always available to share that with you. So, just wanted to close with that. Thank you.
I assume the NLC policy agenda is available on their website.
It is, and, and to be clear, we, we vote in block. So, you, we, it's one vote. So, you vote yes on that. So, I voted on behalf of the city, but it, there wasn't, there weren't amendments. In fact, you can't bring amendments to the floor. So, it is just an up or down vote of the, of the whole packet. We voted it with one, literally one vote, but I wanted you to be able to look at those in case you had questions.
Alright, thanks, Mayor, glad to have you back this week.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Alright, so I know that staff were working as we move on to the order of the agenda. I know there was some work still on a property purchase in F sixteen, I believe. Did we make any progress on that?
Council President, an email went out with the, and the packet was updated with the executed agreement for the property that had not had an executed agreement in the packet.
So, would it be appropriate to approve the order of the agenda as, as currently available in the packet?
Yes, however, I believe that item had been pulled.
Yes, the item's pulled anyway, so we'll have a little more time for discussion. So, yes, noting that that change has been reflected in the published agenda, there's not an additional change, correct?
Council President, I'll just point out, so that that email came from me. It's got an appeals heading and then the signed agreement is also attached, just so you can find it.
I see, I didn't open all five attachments. I just saw the appeals. Okay, so we have it in our inboxes. It's already being pulled, go ahead and make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the order of the agenda as current with the recent updates to F sixteen.
Alright, Councilmember Keen and Wal.
Nothing to add.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Right, moving on to the consent agenda, Councilmember Dennis has pulled F four. Councilmember Palmer is pulling F sixteen. Councilmember Dennis is pulling F seventeen. We'll be discussing reports and recommendations. Is there anything else?
Yes, Councilmember President, in light of the resident who came to speak about trees, I would also like to pull F eight for discussion. Thank you.
Alright, so that's F four, eight, sixteen and seventeen. Alright, I will invite a motion to approve and block items F one through three, five through seven, nine through fifteen.
So moved.
Alright, any discussion? Councilmember Keen, others? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Point of order. Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to suspend our rules and approve without debate or amendment the requested actions in F four, which is the summary of performance evaluation for City Attorney Michael Spindler Craig. I request a roll call vote.
Alright.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Keen, a word of explanation?
Yeah, I'm making this motion to ensure the city attorney's personnel identity remains private in accordance with the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. I'm making this motion without discussions with my peers, so I'm surprising some people. It is my understanding a motion like this to suspend rules requires a super majority. And I have nothing further to add and I request that we move to a roll call.
Right, Clerk Geisler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Bransford.
Aye.
Councilmember Wal.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Nay.
Council President Carlson.
Aye.
There are six ayes and one nay.
Alright, motion carries, six, one.
Moving on to public hearings. Point of order, wasn't there a discussion after a motion to suspend the rules? There's no discussion?
Nope, that, the motion included with no debate. Alright, moving on to public hearings. So, as always, I take a moment to go through the process by which we do public hearings. There's a staff introduction to an item. If there's an applicant or representative of the applicant, that person has up to ten minutes to present. We open the public hearing. We allow public comment for up to five minutes per person. And then we close the public hearing. The applicant, if there is one, has a chance to provide a rebuttal for up to five minutes before council members can ask clarifying questions of the applicant or staff and move on to motion and discussion and vote. So, several of our items today are city-led, so there isn't an applicant. And we will start with our first item of three certifications for collection of taxes, and that is G one. The certification for collection with taxes for unpaid administrative citations for weed and snow removal. And this is a three-part motion and I'd ask my colleagues to consider a motion to continue the hearing to December fourth when we open the public hearing. Point of order. Alright, so I will ask Kelly Peterson.
To go ahead and introduce. Thank you, Mayor. Council President and members of the council, I'm Kelly Peterson with the Public Works Department. There are three hearings tonight, the first one being, as you stated, the certification for collection of taxes for unpaid administrative citations and snow removal. These are reimbursing the city for completing special charges related to code enforcement and they're based on a per unit cost. Currently, there's seven appeals attached to the current council agenda and those seven, we would like you to address tonight. Anything that was received from the council packet through today would be brought back to the December fourth meeting. Two were provided on the next hearing and I'll talk through those. And if there was any appeals, we would like the parcel number and the address stated just for record.
Okay. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll get back to you after the public hearing.
I can describe the appeals if you'd like, otherwise.
Actually, would you mind?
Sure.
Taking a couple of moments?
So, appeal one is related to weed admin fine. The address is six two four Meadow Run Drive Southwest. The second one was an appeal received for a weed admin fine at seventeen seventeen Fourth Avenue Southwest. The third one is a refund for a request because they already paid it in full. It isn't in the roll, so this would be receiving a refund if you decided to waive those fees. That one is located at three oh five Thirty-sixth Avenue Northwest. The fourth one is an appeal for snow removal admin fine. The address is four five six eight Buckingham Drive Northwest. The fifth one is also for a snow removal admin fine at two seven three six Ashgash Lane Northwest. The sixth one is a snow removal admin fine for seven sixteen Second Street Northwest. And the seventh one is for a snow admin fine at seven oh seven Seventh Street Northwest. The bulk of these, other than the refund, were all related to one management company and they're asking basically to waive. The bulk of these, other than the refund, were all related to one management company and they're asking basically to waive the fees.
All right, thank you, Ms. Peterson. So we'll get back to you uh with follow-up questions. So just for those of you attending and wanting to speak on this item. When you come up to the podium to speak, to ask for an appeal, even if you have not written this council's your appeal. Uh so it'll be up to council whether we're considering your appeal tonight or continuing the public hearing and considering it on December fourth. Okay, so I have a couple of people signed up. Stephanie Cutley. Please introduce yourself if you have the parcel number or numbers and then also uh your address.
Okay, um so my name is Stephanie Cutley and I'm actually for all seven. Uh on behalf of all of them, so.
Okay, can you state the?
Do you want me to go through all seven parcels?
Do we need her to walk through all seven?
No, she doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um good evening, Mayor, Council President, members. Uh so my name is Stephanie Cutley and I'm here to bring attention that. Um we really feel that there is an issue with the way that these notices are being received and more so not in a timely manner. Um and it is specifically to the snow removal weed and most challenging tree trimming, which also can be a property violation depending on how it's written. Part of why I'm here is there was one that caught my attention last year. It was continuously pushed. We're now a year later. And the only reason I know that is because I had to personally keep reaching out to the city clerk to tell him, hey, this has been rescheduled. I think that just adds to the layer that. The communication isn't there. And despite being the person that's getting these mailed notices or not. It's not being relayed to owners properly and I think that it's costing um other owners and ourselves hundreds of thousands of dollars in fees when we're willing to do the work and we we understand it needs to be done. But if we're not given the chance because we're not receiving and it seems very unfair. The one that prompted this two zero zero five Eighteenth Street was a tree trimming. Um I was aware of it because I got the notice that there was over eight hundred dollars owed on it, to which I had to start asking questions. Um ultimately was told, oh, we sent a notice back in September. I asked for a copy. Um on that notice, it was ten days to get the work done. Um I then from there pulled RPU invoices, rental certificate housing ones, and I showed the date from which they were sent to received. It was about sixteen to seventeen days for each of those. That clearly shows that there's an issue with the mail being processed. Um and as I said, there's seven other properties that we're experiencing this with. I I really believe the big driver here is the fact that the postal system has been struggling. I think anyone in Rochester or Byron has experienced that. I know at my office, for three days in October, they just didn't show up. At my personal residence, I have a security system and I can see that they don't show up some days. It's not that I don't have mail. You don't see any movement at all and as my neighbors have voiced that as well. That's not the city's problem to solve. I understand that. But if the way that you're relaying these invoices and these high charges and these opportunities for us to make it right. But it's not being received, we have to come to some sort of um collaborative agreement. I can show documentation if if it's worth it that we paid several assessments and violations in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. And I had one in January twenty twenty three, but not a single one came after that. That's why I'm up here to voice my concern for seven separate properties. Because the fact that I received a notice of hearing for them, but no violation prior to that concerns me. I think if the mail is very clearly not arriving in a timely manner, it's creating unrealistic expectations for the deadline. Um adding to the process, um as I've begun investigation into this, I'm being sent photos of before and after work. And I'd be happy to show some and you should have one in some of the appeals that I submitted in advance where. The photos are taken at different seasons, they're taken from different directions. And quite honestly, I don't see where the work is being done. Um and so if the work was done, how much was done and why is the cost over eight hundred dollars if what appears in the pictures is very unclear? And quite honestly, what could have been done maybe with just by breaking a tree branch with my hand. Lastly, one thing that um I would say worries me is last week I received an email from someone on your team stating the council has never approved a waiver of these fees. It gives a very negative impression that the time that I've put into this, coming up here, being vulnerable and speaking about this, you've already made your decision before I stood through um came through the door. So. Ultimately, we're just asking that there is a better effort put forward to finding a solution. Let us opt in for email notifications. Um let us reduce the amount of mail. If you're gonna do mail, send two in the same week, make sure it's a couple of days apart, make sure they're being sent. We want to do anything that we can do to implement and make this work. Um include it if it's a rental property in the rental housing side, like they're doing the permits, like there's so many other things. I just don't think that the mail is working anymore. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I have an S, um maybe a Sam. Stapino. I'm so sorry for mispronouncing your name. Come on up. Please introduce yourself. And you uh if you're able to state your address, that would be great.
Feel rather humbled being here with the mayor and all council for such.
We're happy to have you.
Minor violation I have, but thank you for all being here. Uh I have snow removal service at my home. And uh it's for the sidewalks because I'm a senior citizen and I'm often out of town taking care of my parents. And I had the removal done and buy service every year. And with the with the uh typhoon winds we get and sometimes the waves of cooling and and warming and. Anyhow, the sidewalk had been cleaned, but there's a a little uh, I don't know what you call it, where you walk down. And that area, for some reason, there was some melt on it or some some extra snow and the city had to come out and clean it. And uh but I have a regular service that comes out every time and uh. It's just an incident because of unpredictable weather and I'm not there. So I gave my neighbor my name. If if he ever sees such an incident that he thinks concerning, I will call Snow Removal Company. But this, there is nothing I could do on this particular instance, being out of town and having a service and I plead uh mercy to the court or. People here hoping some. And thank you. It's interesting learning all these things today. Thank you very much.
I hate yours.
Could we get the address, though? Yep. Uh are you okay if I read it out loud?
Four forty seven thirty nine Liverpool Lane Northwest. I'm amazed you heard me so quick after all these severe things. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. That is all I have for G one. Is there somebody else who would like to speak on item G one? Please come on up.
Yep, that's this one.
Yeah, come on up.
That's actually the next.
It's G two?
Yeah.
All right, I guess it's item G two, which we're gonna.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's the next item, G two.
Sorry.
So we will call you back up.
Oh.
Just indicate you want to come up and speak. Worries. Anybody else who would like to speak on item G one? We will close the public hearing and um would we like staff to respond to any of the comments made? Ms. Peterson?
Um so the snow removal is actually, uh we do not go out until a minimum of twenty-four hours after snow clearing. So um when she said she's not receiving the mailing for the physical work to allow her time, she was already given time to take care of it. Um as we wouldn't have been out there to clear it or hire a contractor. The weed is different. The weed has the ten-day clock window for the mailing. So I just wanted to.
Councilmember Keenan?
Uh can you respond on this idea that the mail is not going out at all or that it's not, they're not receiving the mail?
I I wouldn't say that that would be the case because we have got a flood of calls since we sent the hearings. Um and I know all of them are going out because I print them all and I hand them to the clerks to mail them.
Okay, because what I'm hearing is that I got noticed for this, but not when the event happened and.
I don't know how that would be any different because the same process.
It is the same process.
Times, yep.
Okay.
The only thing would be if the mailing address got changed at the county level in between. Um because we, all of our print, all of ours is based on what the county records have on on file.
Yeah, and.
So if for some reason they changed their address in the middle of all of it, that could cause it.
And we mailed to the property, the listed person in the as the property owner, whether it is the manager or the real owners, whoever is listed.
Whoever's listed.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Norton?
So two points. Um the first is I I I don't want to.
We're just doing questions right now. Do you have questions for Ms. Peterson? I don't want to throw you off, but we're still in questioning.
You did throw me off. Um I can't remember. I did have a question, actually. Oh, I did have a question and um and then I will make a comment about the mail because I. Deal with that a lot in my office. Um I did have a question about uh the the capability of the city to take. To do either personal delivery or email if someone wanted to do that. Do we, why could we not do an email notification?
So currently the county, we get everything from the county records and I know that they are starting to build their email list, but it's not on every parcel. And it's not something that we could use across the board. But I do know that they are trying to start to build that at the county level.
Okay, Councilmember Wall.
Uh this last uh winter, any of us who uh have lived in this beautiful climate uh was particularly difficult for ice, snow, slush. Uh I'm responding to uh the last gentleman uh who who spoke and said that a service came. Uh do we have any kind of latitude uh for. Considering just I, it was an awful winter on every sidewalk in town. I know, including my own. Uh do we, do we have any latitude if they've already had a service out?
I I'll take this. Um you know, it's difficult. It's complaint-based. We only go out if we get a complaint. We start giving latitude, we start playing, you know, so we're very pretty rigid with this process only because otherwise. We could be reviewing every one of these separately and making separate decisions. We get a complaint, they go out, they have criteria that they measure. If it meets it, then they call somebody out. So we are pretty rigid on that just because it it's, there's too many of them and it gets too difficult and then there's, you know, it's it becomes unfair.
All right, Councilmember Dennis?
That was one of my um questions too about the complaint base. Uh is that, so the complaint base for all of the, all of the, which means everything is?
That that is correct. They're all complaints.
Okay. Okay, so um my, I guess uh my question, like, because I've had um people calling me about. Issues with receiving fees landlords and and different other other things that have happened. Um I guess, is there any follow-up? Um and I apologize if you had covered this and I was um thinking about, but was there, is there any phone follow-up or checking? Because when fees aren't being paid and they're and they've had issues, I I agree with the mail. Mail has delayed in my house too. Does there are staff who call and just check to make sure things have been received?
Uh so we do not have phone numbers, so we can't call anyone. Um as for mailing, once the initial mailing goes out, they wouldn't receive a secondary mailing until a hearing notice.
Okay, and so would there be possibility of like certified mail? I know that's more, but at least that would be a verifiable way of making sure that people have received.
I think certified mailing would probably greatly increase the cost of the actual fine process because they it costs a lot more money to send certified mail.
Thank you. All right, so we got to this point in the meeting and all of you watched me close the public hearing. The option is to go ahead, Clerk Geasler, can you explain how we rectify that little mistake?
Council President, council members, I I mean, you can just walk it back. As long as it's part of the motion that it remain open, it'll be open.
Okay, so with the motion.
Yes, the motion is the formal action, so as long as the motion includes that language.
To re, would it be to reopen or to continue?
Which is the second part of the motion.
Okay, all right. May I ask a a clarifying question?
I believe in the past, when you've done this, you have kept the public hearing open for the appeals that you are not acting on this evening. And the rest of the assessment role moves forward and that piece of the public hearing is typically closed.
That is my understanding, yes. Okay, so is there a motion that would include?
I want to make a motion, but I I want to check with my peers. Is anyone looking to make, to take any action tonight? Because I would, I would rather do it with the staff, come back and have a staff report before we take action. So. I would like to do it the way it's presented, but I think the option is if somebody wants to act differently, I, we should let that happen.
So just as a point of order?
Uh well, let me just, I don't know, I'll just make the three-part motion here, directing the separation of the appeals assessments from the. Assess role and continuing those appeals assessed to the council meeting on December fourth. Second part to continue the public hearing for the separated appeals and then adopt a resolution levying the non-appealed parcels for proposed assessments.
Okay, so Councilmember Keenan, you have the floor, but I think what you're saying is, yes, we'll continue all the appealed properties to December.
All the appeals. I I guess I thought there was a way that if somebody was gonna make move to. Take an action on some of them tonight, we could have done that. Um I I don't care to, I'd rather wait. So I I want to make the motion this way. But I didn't want to do it to Ted to cut somebody off from their their action tonight.
Okay, well, somebody can still do that. Is there any discussion of addressing any of the appealed properties today? All right, otherwise.
Yeah, staff?
Are you guys looking for additional information than what the memo was provided? Because we've already provided a memo for all seven parcels. The only one that we don't have a memo from city staff would be the Liverpool, which is the one that he came up at the end. We didn't have an. Advanced memo on that one. So that was the one I would assume get extended, but. You can choose to extend all of them. I just, are you looking for something additional than what we've already provided?
I I'm looking to to act on December fourth when, after we've already kind of absorbed the public hearings and wait for that, take our action at that point. Um but again, I I I know there was the opportunity to do it tonight. I just didn't know how that would happen.
Or Dennis?
So I would like to amend your motion to vote on the the first uh appeal that we have the information memo on and then. Continue the second, December fourth.
So vote on the uh seven?
Hmm, because if we have all the information, if we're not getting additional information.
Okay.
There's no need to.
So stop there. We'd need a second. It comes from a Kirkpatrick seconded and Councilmember Dennis, you have the floor?
Well, I think uh the resident came and took her time to speak and to have her come back and be part of this another meeting is unfair. Uh if we have all the information here, if we're not gonna be getting additional information, I see no reason to postpone this to probably another busy meeting in a couple of weeks.
So did you motion to?
Oh, I.
Dispense of the item?
Well, I I um I would move to uh, I think, under the circumstances and having what I um know, I I. I I move to. Grant, I don't give.
Just a point of order. Do we already have a motion and a second?
Yeah, we have a second.
A motion and a second, but what were you actually motioning?
Well, for us to vote on the first.
So you called for a vote and that was seconded, but we don't know what we, what the vote would be. What was the motion to to waive the fees?
Uh well, what I have read and what I have heard, I I would say waive the fees because if it's unfair to have fees.
Can you restate your motion then?
Oh, I'm not wording it very well. Uh I would like to make a motion to waive the fees of all seven parcels. Uh due to the uh communication issue with the uh receiving the notices.
Okay, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, is that your understanding of that motion and are you still a second?
That's my understanding, the motion. I'm still a second and I guess I concur. It will just perhaps shorten the December fourth meeting.
All right. Any other discussion on that item?
I'll uh again, I I would speak against that only because two things. I mean, we could, it does seem like we have enough information right now, but I think in a public hearing, I want to then. Kind of go back and get the feedback on it. And outside of that, I I'm still trying to understand, this is our process that it's been approved by our predecessors that we do US mail. That we could change this policy, but to have staff implementing it and then say anybody who objects to it, we just waive fees is, doesn't feel um responsible on our part.
Thank you. Councilmember Palmer and then Councilmember Wall, did you want to speak to this property or the original motion before I skip over you?
I have no idea what I'd be voting on if I voted yes or no right now.
And was to waive the fees for the seven properties that the first speaker came up representing.
Is that an amendment to the first motion or is that uh, is that a substitute motion?
Nope, it's an amendment just to specifically deal with those seven properties. The rest of the motion stands. It would just, there be amended or not. And Councilmember Palmer, hold that thought. Would you like? You speak or?
What about the Liverpool property?
So that was not part of this amendment? Okay, Councilmember Palmer, go ahead.
Um I I won't support the amendment because um we do have a process in the uh we're served whether or not the mail is slow is is really not. Anything that we have control of and um the rules are that you have to take care of your sidewalks and if you're in association or a um. You're in it for the money, that that that's your job to make sure that stuff is being done. So I will be um supporting the um with these seven.
All right, any final discussion on this amendment? So the motion is to waive. We'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, uh motion fails. So we're back to the original set of motions made by Councilmember Keenan. Any further discussion?
Point of order, are we back to the original motion or now did we, have we dispensed? Point of order, are we back to the original motion or now did we, have we dispensed with the seven?
No, we, it didn't pass.
It didn't pass, but where, are we gonna look at them again?
No, we don't have to.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to establish.
We can on December.
We can, but we don't have to, cause we've just dispensed with them.
No, the original motion is to carry forward.
I'm trying to think of what the motion was then, I thought it amended this, but okay, I'm, I'm good with it.
Well, that, the amendment didn't pass, so.
Okay.
Unless you want to amend it to deny.
Nope, no, I'm okay with.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the original motion, three-part motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, all right, sorry, these are really complicated agenda items and we have three of them. So here we go, onto number two. Okay, so G2 is the certification for collection with taxes of unpaid special charges for weeds, snow, rubbish and tree removal, secure property and property violation. And I have Stephanie Cutley again.
Uh, Council President, Mayor, members, Stephanie Cutley, I mean, I'm not gonna reiterate everything I said, but in terms of the tree removal, this is where the photos are quite evident of, I'm not sure of the work. And, um, to some of the questions I heard, one thing I would just counter and ask quite directly is can you 100% confidently say that a violation has never been returned to sender?
All right, thank you. Hey, uh, Tony Hanson? See, you did sign up for the right one and everything, your name is on here, there you go. Success, so if you'd state your name and your address?
Tony Hanson is for 507 Apple Ridge Boulevard Southwest. So, um, in the assessment, about 337.75, forty, forty dollars of appeal fee. And then I, a lovely handout for you all from Office Max. Right there, okay, all right, I'm not, I'm, I'm a technical disaster, anyway. Okay, so, um, I, uh, I've owned my home at 507 Apple Ridge Boulevard for about two decades and I take full responsibility as a citizen and as a person for removing the, uh, snow, which I've done by hand for two decades. I have never had one single fine in that entire time of ownership. I'm a retired senior citizen in my mid seventies, I have multiple medical problems, including four shoulder surgeries, carpal tunnel, yada, yada, yada. You know, the routine. Anyway, I've shoveled my sidewalk in January and touche to the comment that was made about the Minnesota winters. As you recall, it's a difficult snow and ice conditions. It's the kind of thing where the snowplow comes by and you have to take, take acts to the end of your driveway. You probably remember those times. Um, I do enjoy shoveling snow and I get out and I shovel the snow and I had shoveled the snow at least twice, um, immediately before this. And then besides that, I hired B&amp;B, a snow removal company to come out and I paid them seventy dollars to remove snow additionally. And, and that was on the eighth of January, which is just a day prior to the cities, uh, coming out. So, um, and I did pay them for the rest of the winter. I was really stunned to receive a city fine for snow removal. I, and like I said, I paid forty dollars to contest it. Um, as it was my understanding, this would be contested and that the hearing would be by June. But I understand you all have had a tremendously full agendas continuously, so things have kind of gotten, gotten out until November here. So I just, I just assumed that since I hadn't received the notification that everything was fine. I mean, I, uh, it was gonna be okay. Um, so at any rate, um, I did try to go to City Hall to get the original copy of the letter and I had problems. I called the person and they, that wasn't even their phone anymore and so on and so forth. So I don't, I apologize, I don't have the original letter anymore, but you all probably do. Um, the city photograph that was provided, and I've included that in your packet, was low resolution, low contrast of my sidewalk. You can see, if you look at slightly enhanced, that there's definitely where it's been shoveled all the way there. Um, and then like I said, B&amp;B did additional shoveling. Uh, and there was a large charge, I don't remember what it was, like seventy dollars for sand or something? Never in my life have I seen any of my neighbors ever put sand on their sidewalks. And there were, their sidewalks around me were in horrible condition and there was solid ice on one of them. And not a single person that I talked to was reported for snow violation. And after, uh, after the city came, then there was a dusting of snow like a day or two later and it really looked like it had in the pre-foto when I had done it. So I think the sand made it look artificially good. But like I said, meanwhile, the neighboring sidewalks were far worse shape. Um, nobody else had gotten a fine. I feel it's a discriminatory practice really when an anonymous individual can call and report somebody. There's no accountability on their part. And it's, it's really a, a very difficult situation. We do have, and I'm sure some of you might live in neighborhoods where you have the neighbor from hell and we have one of those in our neighborhood, so I suspect it was probably her, but I'll never know. Not that it really matters. I think that the important things, like I mentioned, are the fact that I did clear the sidewalk. I had, I'd hired a company to hide the side, to do the sidewalk even a day before. I'm a senior citizen with multiple medical problems and to tell you the truth, this social, this fine takes a big chunk out of your social security for really no reason as far as I'm concerned. And I've had no snow fine for decades and I've hand removed my snow from this address forever. So I'm hopeful that this can just be dismissed, so it doesn't have to go further. I really trust that you'll take it into consideration and hopefully it's missing. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. All right, Abdi Salan Sahal. Welcome, introduce yourself and state your property address.
My name is Abdi Salan Sahal. The property address is Street 10, 14th Street, Southeast Rochester.
All right, you have five minutes.
Yeah, so I have issue for the trees in the butterfly. They, no one gave it to me good time to good notice. So I have prepared it to cut it, you know, half the cheaper than what they show me. And then next day, I'm ready to come, you know, company say we're cutting. It is, I say, I'm ready to cut because it's a shorter term, I don't receive it even, you know, notice. Uh, they say, no, we have order to seal it and we have to cut it. So I cannot stop my hand, you know? And this is not, I cannot afford it to that one because it's too much money, the way I expected to cut it. And also it's the butterfly, you know, it's not inside the robot. That's issue I come to night.
Thank you, Mr. Sahal. Um, Muriel Ottman or Oltman?
State your name and address. Hi, my name is Muriel Oltman and I live at 3230 Arbor Drive. I submitted a written appeal, but I'd also like to state that, uh, I am on the, one of the corner lots and as you said, it was a very bad winter. Unfortunately, the city snowplow dumps all of the snow and ice from the cul-de-sac onto my sidewalks and my driveway. I actually wouldn't be able to leave my driveway unless my neighbor across the street helps me. He's from the Upper Peninsula and has a very nice snow blower. Um, I'm asking for leniency on the fees, cause I actually was having a lot of medical issues, which I wrote down in the written appeal as well, um, and was unable to clear it. Um, there's also before and after pictures that I was sent and they just kind of took the top layer off. It wasn't even cleared because the ice was so thick and from everything that the snowplow dumped. Um, hopefully this winter won't be as bad and I'll be able to stay ahead of it. But otherwise, it was kind of impossible for one person to take care of. So just asking for leniency on all of those fees. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak who hasn't spoken? All right, I see a melody, excuse me, there's one person online, I'm just gonna call on quickly. Melantr Liden, who's joining virtually. If you're hoping to speak on item G2, go ahead and unmute yourself. And you do that by pressing star six or using the unmute button.
Yeah, I had, um, had my 305 36th Avenue presented earlier and I had my hand up but was unable to speak. Um, I, my concern is just along what was just said, um, by many people. Um, I had cleaned everything to meet standards. It was down to ice and packed down snow that I couldn't remove anymore as a human. The service or the contractors came and really did nothing, which you can see in the pictures, they just drove their bobcat and threw out dirt and charged me three hundred dollars. I had also offered, um, the, the plow had come through again, being on the corner lot just as the last lady, the plow comes through and dumps everything even after you've cleared away. Um, I told, um, the people that sent the citation that I could pay the pedestrian fee of fifty dollars. Um, and said I'd be happy to pay for the dirt too, even though that was ridiculous. Um, and I would just like some consideration that the city not have the bar higher for people doing the best they can. And then having neighbors that may or may not like you call and then they come out and, you know, fine you and charge you for work that wasn't even done.
All right, thank you, Ms. Liden, just a point of order for my colleagues. I know we're mid-public hearing here, but she was interested in speaking for G1, we didn't see her hand. So can, is everybody comfortable if we just note her appeal under item G1? Just a nod of approval.
She's actually in G1 and G2 because she, she could talk in either one. That it's, she's got an admin fine and a contractor fee.
All right, we can note her in both. All right, thank you. Moving on, I know there was another individual wanting to speak, come on up. And we'll ask that you introduce yourself and state your address, as I don't have it in front of me.
My name is Miranda Johnson, my address is 1409 14th Avenue Northwest. Um, I, on Friday, September 8th, I got an assessment of my property. Um, I got a weed citation that was written by Parks and Recs that gave you the 48-hour notice to take care of any weeds. Um, the end of the 48-hour notice was Sep, Sunday, September 10th. And the citation letter, which was obviously sent through USPS, which many people have stated, was timestamped that it was processed on Saturday at 3:00 PM, which means that it did not come back down to Rochester until Monday. Um, I did not receive the letter until late Monday, September 11th, which was ultimately 24 hours after the mitigation window, which means I didn't know I had a citation until it was too late. Um, prior to receiving a citation on Monday, I had already spent the afternoon removing weeds from the front half of my property and had them stacked next to my front stoop that anyone could easily see from walking past the property or driving that I was in fact taking care of it. Um, I don't understand how Rochester residents and me specifically are supposed to remedy a citation if they don't even know it has occurred yet. Um, I also did not receive a bill for the weed removal until October 22nd. Um, it was dated October 20th and I immediately received a notice, October 23rd, dated October 23rd and delivered October 27th, that I did not pay it in a timely manner and I would be assessed another fee, sorry. Um, the, the initial invoice stated that the date of the work was unknown, so I don't know when someone came to my property and mowed. And the so-called weed removal was an extremely poor mowing of my property, leaving weeds chopped up and spread around my yard, causing even more weeds for me to take care of. Sorry.
You're okay.
Um, I have since paid for the weed removal because someone obviously came to my property and did the work and I would like to pay them for doing it and I appreciate it. But if I had known in the beginning that I had a citation, I would have obviously taken care of it in the timeframe necessary. Um, I also, um, am the only one living there. Um, I work here in Rochester at Mayo, I work up in the cities at Children's. Um, so I'm between cities, um, constantly and I do my best to keep up on everything. But when it's been 90-plus degrees most of the summer and the only days that I have off, it's hot or it's raining, it's, there's not much chance for me to actually take care of anything. The big thing is that if, if there's going to be a 48-hour notice for a citation and it's going to be sent in the mail, um, it's almost impossible to get a letter sent from Rochester, even if you sent it first thing in the morning, for it to go from here to St. Paul and to come back down within that timeframe. So I at least ask, uh, if you're going to assess a 48-hour timeframe, you have to find a way to talk to people, either when they're doing the assessment or that day, either be a phone call or an email or someone coming to knock on your door later in the day. Because it's impossible to do something in 48 hours based on a letter that you don't receive for seven, two hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on item G2? All right, and just note that we will continue the public hearing, uh, with a motion. So can we ask staff questions with an open public hearing or can we close the public hearing with the intent to continue? Why is this so hard tonight? I don't know.
You can ask questions.
Okay.
The motion will codify that the meeting's gonna stay open.
Thank you, sorry about that, Councilmember Palmer?
I have a couple of questions. Um, do we leave a notice on the property when we made it, make an inspection?
We do not.
We do not?
Weeds, I guess, I don't know if there's somebody from Parks that can answer that question, I'm not sure if you guys do or not.
We, for snow removal, it's a 24-hour, it's, you know, we, it's a 24-hour.
So we're having trouble hearing you.
So for snow, there's a 24-hour requirement, so we do not go out until after a minimum of 24 hours. But do we leave something at the property? We do not currently.
So let, let's talk about snow first, okay? So it snows, we get 24 hours to clear it, somebody complains, we get another 24 hours before we go out?
We do not go out until 24 hours from the last snowfall. So sometimes it's 72 hours depending on the day, like if we get snow.
But somebody has to call you.
Somebody has to call.
Okay, do you accept the call before the 24 hours is up or do they?
We take a call at any point. And then, like, say it starts snowing today, we're gonna wait from that snow for a full 24 hours to the following morning before we would even go out to look at them.
Okay, and then they do plow and their sidewalk and then the plow comes by fast and throws the snow back up the next day. Do we give them another 24 hours or do we know that that's new snow?
Yeah, I, I may, I know Tyler Niemeyer's watch, or online, maybe we could ask him to confirm, cause I'm not quite positive if they wait for, you know, if they kind of make a judgment call for, for the corners or not. Um, I, I just don't know.
Yeah.
Well, we've talked about 14th Street Northeast where they get a good head of steam and it goes on the sidewalk after it's been cleared. And does that start the clock again or do we go from the original snowfalls?
Everything is done by the original snowfall, so we'll wait till, I can, yeah.
Okay, the second one then would be for weeds.
The one other thing, point I wanted to make sure people understood for them, you know, the mailing, whether the mail took longer or not is really for, for snow removal really doesn't matter, right? There is an additional, fees assessed per day. They are assessed based on, you know, us sending it out, you know, it's basically the additional fee is for us to process.
Okay, so let's, let's go to weeds for me. So we get, we don't leave a note or we don't know if we leave a note?
Allison's right over there.
Hi, sure.
Come on up to.
To the microphone, please.
Recognize you.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead and speak to that.
Um, no, we do not leave a notification on the door, we just send the notice by mail. The notice does say 24 hours, but our contractor does not go out until the fifth day, cause we allow three days for the mail.
It, it, and why do you go 48 hours, is it?
That's what the ordinance states.
Is there a safety reason, is there a health reason 48 hours? Could you go four or five days and then, and then? The notice or?
Yeah, yeah, we're just following the ordinance for that.
Okay, so we change your.
If you could change your, yes.
Yeah, we changed your notice to 20 days, you'd say, great, wonderful. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Ms. Lidgey. Yeah, I, I don't understand why we don't put notices on doors, I don't, I think that needs to change too. Um, well, so my, a couple, a couple of questions. Um, with, okay, this. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, there's this, what are the, can we just list out the fees? Just, if you can kind of, how, how much is it for snow? How much is it for weeds? How much is it for a tree, I mean, what we're working on right here? Can you just, can you just list out the fees for each? For each violation, I mean, for a violation of snow is, is, it's.
Snow is, is based solely on the frontage and the cost and whether or not we remove pet ramp or we sand.
Okay, okay.
There's different costs for each one. So each one is not, like, every house is the same price.
Okay, so if you come out and they, like, the first speaker had B and B come already. If you see it's already been done, then it's just waived the fee or I, I guess I, I'm everyone here has taken a lot of time to document to show that they've gone and tried to uh, remedy these issues. And I just, I guess I feel like it's not being taken into account. Um, but my question, another question is financial. Is there a financial uh, component if someone's unable to pay the fine? Is there a stipend or, I know, something that is allotted to residents who just can't pay?
Uh, there, there's not, there's not.
I would also note, though, that in some of the memos, it has been clarified that the um, Family Service Rochester service that we partner with um, has been provided to folks who have had challenges, especially with snow removal. Um, and that is something that they would have to connect directly with that service. But we do provide that information to them. Um, when they um, share that they have challenges um, keeping their sidewalk clear. So um, in some of the memos, it does clarify that. I believe that Parks also has partnered with Family Service Rochester and perhaps Ms. Litchy could share whether or not they um, provide that information when they are made aware that someone has a burden with the tall grass and weeds.
Yeah, we put those flyers.
You have to speak into
Yeah, we speak at the microphone.
Um, yes, we put the citation, that every administrative fee that we send has the flyer for family services in it.
Thank you. And then, I have had this experience. I had someone call me in for having too many toys in my backyard. So I was kind of astonished. So I cleaned up my toys and did not get a fine. I'm not my, my children's toys and did not get a fine. But I, I know how frustrated it is when you don't know who calls it in. And um, some of the things I was called in for were just proven untrue. I won't go into that. But um, it, do the, does the city watch the person who, I mean, keeps record of the people who call in? I know it's anonymous because it was anonymous for me as well. I, I, I know that. But it's, I mean, if there's issues like a personality conflict, a lot of this stuff is very subjective too. I'm looking at these pictures and I'm like, this, you know, we have people coming in assessing fees that are, are judgment calls. And I, I do worry about in an age where we have a lot of, I don't want to say vindictiveness, but a lot of um, harsh situations when people just punish people for their own personality issues. Um.
Point of order, we do have professionals using criteria to assess. It is not just a
That, that is correct.
Casual judgment.
Right, we actually have all of our inspectors who get called out, go through a process. We lay it out clearly what would qualify, you know, as a actual snow needing to be snow removal. Yeah, I have also for Councilman Palmer's question, um, Tyler wasn't able to get on. We do check the GPS route and we do not go, we make sure that it's been twenty-four hours since the snowfall went by.
Thank you.
Well, so what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, I just, I worry about, I mean, this is happening, it might happen again to the same because certain neighbors, I know from my neighborhood, they're wonderful neighbors, have different standards.
Excuse me, we are waiting for discussion until there's a motion.
Okay, I guess I'm just wondering, do they keep track of the people calling in and if there's a habitual, like, someone just really has a high standard for snow removal and continuously calls and reports neighbors? Is there any kind of um, action taken to, to talk to the person calling them in to say maybe this, I don't know, I just, I'm just curious.
So we do not keep the names. It's completely anonymous. We don't track them. We don't know who they are. But for snow removal, we do review um, the block standard. So ones called in, but we could do four houses in a row if they all are the same. You know, if all four of them haven't cleared snow.
Oh, okay, so they, they don't have
So it's not necessarily one specific person's targeted and then we're gonna leave the one on both sides of it.
Okay, so that's, that's different than other things.
Weeds, I believe weeds is just who is called in.
Okay, so if you walk in to the resident who was called in for having weeds and everywhere around her has, you know,
You'd have to ask Park and Rec.
They would.
Because I don't have that answer, but for snow, that is not the case.
I just also want to point out that per state law, I believe, complaint data is actually protected private data. It's not actually public data per the Data Practices Act. So we couldn't release the complainant's name.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Keen, question?
Yeah, again, maybe a clarification, but we, we've gone through these public hearing. One is for the citations. Now we're on to the fees that we charge. I thought I heard it said, although I don't think it's true, that if somebody goes to remove snow and it's removed or if somebody goes to cut the grass and it's cut, we still charge them? I don't think we do.
We don't charge them the contractor's fee, but they would still get the admin fine because we were out there and it wasn't done.
And that makes sense, right? Because that's based on trying to recover our costs for going out and having, putting this program in place.
Correct.
Okay, and as far as the standards, I mean, this idea of like, let's just answer for what Public Works does. There is training and when they go to assess, there is a standard. They don't just, it's not just a whimsical judgment call.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any final questions or a motion? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Snow removal is twenty-four hours after it stops snowing, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And then you heard the clarification about as the snowplow goes by, they give another twenty-four hours.
No, the snowplow, it has to be at least twenty-four hours after a snowplow goes by. And we track that either with the, usually with the GPS data that we have on the plot.
But, but the clarification, I mean, I've been involved in some of these where the assessor knows that that's been shoveled and there's snow been pushed back up on it. And they don't assess that, the one, the one I was involved with. So, I mean, that's part of the training of the people looking at these things.
Yes, people aren't trying to, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. All right, well, is there a motion?
Oh, I'll, I'll make a motion, a three-part motion. Number one, direct the separation of the appeals assessments. Number two, continue the public hearing to a separate appeal uh, for a council meeting on December fourth and then adopt a resolution levying the remaining proposed assessments for weed removal, snow uh, removal, rubbish removal and tree removal um, of uh, onto the tax rolls with the interest rate of four point five percent.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Keen?
I, I, a lot of times when these things come up, we end up sort of reassessing what our policies are. And it may be time to do that at some point. Um, I think that's good. But when we have these policies in place, um, I think we have to, you know, make sure they're being uh, ex- uh, supported correctly. But I think we also have to support the policies that we put in place.
Yeah, I have that exact same response that we have to follow the policies that we as a common council or predecessors have set. And yet, maybe there's an opportunity to consider policies moving forward that does give a little bit more room, like after a plow, allowing more time, just a, a thought. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I agree, and I guess um, I would, I would like to see us kind of, um, not kind of, but I'd like to see us look at what that ordinance is for the weed removal, tree trimming with the height restraints um, overhanging, and then of course, the snow removal to make sure that people are getting notifications in a timely fashion so that they can actually respond to it. Um, I see we've got some time in a study session, probably not enough to get something together this year, but I think we should make this a priority for when we um, come back in the, in, you know, January or February to look at these ordinance changes.
Also appreciate a study session at some point in the next six months or so. All right, Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you. So I, I a hundred percent agree that some of these are unreasonably strict and need to be reevaluated. However, I also think that people who are being punished right now uh, and for things that, that um, are unseen, I mean, they have difficult winters, snow and ice can be packed, there's variable with um, I believe, subjectiveness when people call things in. And I think that even though we have policies, doesn't mean the policies are correct. And life is not black and white and we need to have compassion and see that there are reasons why uh, people should have their fees um, waived. And I, for all of the people who have spoken today, I feel they have brought a compelling case and reasonings that um, justify this being a learning experience and having a one-time waiving of their fees. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dennis. Quick point of order for Clerk Geisler. We have two hands up in the virtual queue at a very awkward time in the meeting. So how would, how should we proceed?
Re, reopen, reopen the
Council President, awkward in what way? Because we've carried on past the hearing already?
Yes, but, but it is still continued. So can we just invite them to speak or?
Should I move to reopen the public hearing?
No, it's still open.
I think we can invite them to speak and if uh, if, if you, they can determine whether they'd like to hold their opportunity for now or next time, if it's related to this specific matter.
All right, is everybody comfortable with that verbal nod or not verbal?
Sure.
Visual nod, okay. So I have three people I, who have their hands raised. I'm assuming you're wanting to speak on item G two. So I see a David Cole and use the unmute button or star six. And just your address, your name, and please confirm that you are wanting to do your appeal right now compared to December fourth. Again, sorry, this is so clunky. David, I can see you're unmuted, but not, I can't hear you. Bill can't hear you. All right, we're gonna move on to the next person and same thing. Please state your name and uh, address and we would ask that you state whether you'd like to do your appeal right now or when we continue the public hearing on December fourth. Marcus Washington. What's going on? We can't hear anybody. Still can't hear you, Marcus. All right, we're gonna try the third person, Eric Bjorn, oh, go ahead, Council or Clerk Geisler?
Mr. Washington, are you there? It looks like you're unmuted.
Yeah, they've been unmuted and not, I can't hear anything. Now we have five people with their hands raised. All right, Eric Bjornson, can you unmute yourself? Star six or unmute button? Something's going on with our technology. Or theirs. Three in a row?
Councilmember President, we are almost at ninety minutes. Could we take a, a break now and see what, if this can be fixed?
Uh.
No, we're in the middle of a public
We're, just, let's give them a couple more. Mr. Bjornson, can you hear us or can you try speaking again? All right, how about Albert Spear? Use star six or unmute yourself?
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, there we go. I hear you, El- Albert Spear. Please state your name, your address, and then if you are wanting to appeal tonight, you may go ahead and you have five minutes. We just lost it, that person.
Madam President, I would just suggest going on to the fifth and last person. If you don't hear from them, move on with the business. We need to correct something on the back end. We'll do that.
All right, so we have Ursula Haverbeck. If you can unmute yourself and try speaking. All right, so very sorry, not sure what's going on. Uh, let's go ahead and um, invite all of you. So I have David Cole, Eric Bjornson, Ursula Haverbeck and Marcus Washington to speak during the public hearing on December fourth and apologies for uh, you're hoping to speak tonight and not being able to do so. All right, so we have a motion.
Council President, just point where there was one additional name that I didn't capture and we'll get it from the recording.
Okay, I think it was Albert.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah.
Councilmember Keen?
I just want to do a follow-up just on the, you know, someone's asking like, of course we want to have these appeals because we want to make sure that our, our ordinances are being correctly. We should, we'll find out some surprises, things that are unintended consequences and we will need to find those out and use those to change. So I think there's a good reason to have this. But, I mean, I want to speak for the residents who want clear sidewalks and who don't want to live next to a yard that's got ten-inch grass. Those are, those are things that drove us to have these ordinances. Um, I, I guess when I think of the spirit of the law, someone waiting to get noticed that their gra- that their grass is in mowed or that their snow isn't shoveled, aren't following the, the spirit of, of those rules. So I, I don't come here as sympathetic to say, oh, I didn't get the mail that day, therefore I didn't know that I should shovel the snow. It's, it just doesn't ring true to me. But if our mail process isn't working or if we have some over anxious people like giving out wrong citations, we need to know that and work on it. But um, I, I guess I ask that we keep in mind, not just the people that are coming here, but also what these rules were for.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I also wonder if we have a little bit more education on the snow removal. I see it on, on social media a lot more. We've got no M May, but are, are, are we giving the same amount of attention to educating and showing people and letting them know what those ordinances are and the natural landscape permit, if you want to let your grass grow long, but that doesn't exempt you from noxious weeds? You know, the eight-foot height above the sidewalk. Can we make sure that there's, you know, kind of maybe equal education for all of those things and we just don't emphasize our horrendous winters, maybe?
We, we continue to do that and we will, basically every city in Minnesota has either a twenty-four hour or forty-eight hour snow clearing policy for sidewalks. It's so people don't have to walk in the middle of the street. Um, and so, and especially for some people, so they don't have to roll in the middle of the street if they are not able to walk. So there is a balance of that and forty-eight hours of not being able to roll or walk is challenging for people who maybe don't have other options. However, we do a lot of notice and as you can see of the hundred and twenty-five thousand people that live in Rochester, this is a fairly small assessment roll. So I think that would tell you that most people are doing as much as they can on this. That doesn't mean that people don't fail sometimes. Um, but it is, this is actually also part of the education.
Yeah, thank you for that. All right, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. So we have one more of these, but I don't have anybody signed up for this one. So I will turn it over to Ms. Peterson to introduce G three. Actually, excuse me, we will take a break. Remember Dennis asked for a break. I'm so sorry. Uh, let's reconvene at eight forty.
Recording stopped.
All right, thank you.
Recording in progress.
One, we are moving on to item G three, the certification for collection with taxes of unpaid utility charges, electric sewer, water and storm. And it's back over to Ms. Peterson to introduce this item.
I don't really have anything additional to add, but yes, that is the hearing. I don't have any appeals for this one.
All right, we will open the public hearing. And as I said, I don't have anybody signed up for this item, but would anybody like to appeal? Is there somebody joining virtually? This is the same person that we couldn't get to speak earlier. All right, Eric Bjornson, if you are wanting to speak on item G three, we'll try one more time. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Using the unmute button or star six. Right, so we'll close the public hearing. As we don't have any appeals and there weren't any additional appeals.
Just to clarify that we do have appeal, we have appeals, we just don't have any new ones or any testimony. There's a list in the packet of delinquent utilities that are those considered appeals? No.
No, those are, those are the.
Those are just the rules of fine. So none of these have been appealed.
Yep, no, there was one gentleman that had called, but he actually paid it today. So he didn't file.
Is that the four twenty eight or is that something?
No, it's six twelve twelfth Avenue Southeast.
Okay.
Wait, any other questions for staff?
I think the one you're asking about though, was actually rubbish removal, which was the last, the last one. So that one will come under the twelve.
No, this, oh, I'm sorry. All right, that's in the.
Yeah, so the one you're asking about was four oh three Third Street Northwest. That one's coming already to the.
Okay, good. Thank you. That that helps.
Okay, so to be clear, we do not need to continue this public hearing and we can change the motion to reflect that we are dispensing of it tonight. So is there a motion?
So I'll make a two part motion here directing the separation of, well, I guess I'll just do adopt the resolution levying the remaining proposed assessments for unpaid utility charges assessed over a period of one year with an interest rate of four point five percent.
Second.
Right, Councilmember Keane.
So I dropped the recommended two part, the first two parts directing the separation and continuing the public hearing, because there did not seem to be a need.
That was your understanding, Councilmember Palmer?
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to item G four. Which is the zone change number C D twenty twenty three zero zero nine Z C by the city for parcels near the downtown core. And we have Mr. Ryan Yetzer here. So after you get set up. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Norton, President Carlson, members of the city council. Good evening. My name is Ryan Yetzer. I'm with the community development department and I'll be here to just to talk about C D twenty twenty three zero zero nine zone change. We'll start with this timeline. This is a timeline that you folks have seen several times now, but I like to come back to it to show kind of the journey that we've been on here. And I'll get into it in a moment, but the new items on this timeline, of course, are that this has come before you. This was before you back in October to review the zoning map update. You folks provided some direction to us. And so I'm here to kind of walk through the changes we've made since that time. And and that's what I'll do through this presentation. So as a reminder, what is the zoning map update? Remember, there was three criteria for what we were reviewing. It was zoning where the land use and zoning and current zoning were inconsistent with one another. Based on feedback from city council, it was taking a look at the M X T or better known as the transit oriented development zoning district to reanalyze that and see if we should consider shortening it. And then finally, based on council direction, it was to look at the two thousand nineteen mapping of the R two X boundary and review that to see if we should recommend any changes. So on September thirteenth, the planning commission recommended approval of the first two items minus the R two X changes. And then on October second, you folks approved that same recommendation of moving forward with the zone change number criteria one and two for the inconsistent parcels and the M X T parcels. And then directed staff to bring forward an alternative R two X proposal. So as a reminder, R two X was originally mapped in two thousand nineteen based on some direction from the comprehensive plan to create an infill and redevelopment zoning district to better have have growth occur in fill as well as on the edge of cities. This allowed for more sustainable development. The comp plan specifically told us where to designate these areas based on the stability and change map, which is on your screen now. These areas were identified as residential reinvestment areas, which again, as I talked about last time, were properties near downtown. Properties that were developed on a grid pattern and properties where the the land value was larger than the than the structure value. Based on council direction, we were asked to do an equity review of of that mapping. We really did that based on using the American Association of Planning's Equity and Zoning Policy Guide. And so here's a couple of reminders of things to keep in mind while we think about where R two X should should be designated to have that equitably dispersed in all four quadrants of downtown. This was well documented back on October second, so I won't go further into that unless you folks would like me to, but I just wanted to remind that that is really what our recommendation was based in. A couple of things to talk about that continually have been brought up through this discussion is the first is historic preservation. Reminder that historic preservation and zoning work together, not against each other. So heritage preservation, the the locally designated heritage preservation overlay reviews the design of a proposal. It's looking at the exterior of a structure, whereas zoning is looking at permitted uses, regulating heights, setbacks, parking standards, et cetera. So for example, there is a property right in this area that is zoned R four and also locally designated as the historic preservation overlay. We've been working with that particular property owner for over a year to help them understand what they can do different with their property without touching the exterior of the building. So there is ways to do both. There is ways to increase density while maintaining historic preservation. And so that's an important item to keep in mind. Another item that has continually come up is the questioning of the non residential uses allowed in the R two X zoning district. So if I can take everyone back to two thousand nineteen, R two X was a zoning district really designed to have a little bit of that new urbanism type of of feel to it. Where you can have a coffee shop on the corner of a neighborhood, where you could have a vet clinic on the corner of a neighborhood, where you could have an office or a haircut hairstylist in a neighborhood in a walkable space. On the screen here is all of the non residential uses that are permitted in the R two X zoning district. These were not by mistake. These were well discussed through the R two X process in two thousand nineteen and then again through the U D C process back in that timeline that I talked about. I'll run through some of these quickly. Veterinary and animal services screen, there is screening requirements when located in a neighborhood. There is also hours of operations restrictions. Neighborhood food service, there's square footage restrictions and they are per their definition intended to serve the local neighborhood. Think old Abe's Coffee Shop. That is a neighborhood food service use. Business and personal service, these uses are permitted out of the home today in every zoning district in Rochester. So all this is saying is you can open up a small hair cutting place instead of having it out of your home. There's hours of operations restrictions. You cannot take access off of a local street. So there are protections in place to kind of put the box around how these uses can can be done. On the on the right hand side is conditional use permits. So things like bed and breakfast, art studio. Bed and breakfast comes with a whole slew of use specific standards. Art studios are permitted in every residential zoning district on a conditional use permit. Small retail and repair and maintenance, repair and maintenance per definition is specifically not vehicle or an audio maintenance. It's other items. Additionally, keep in mind that these are conditional use permits. So they will go to a body. They will have a public hearing and you would add conditions to them. So for example, if there was a small retail and the neighborhood worked with the retailer and said, we want this to close at five o'clock, we could add that as a condition of approval that the retailer is closing at five o'clock. So keep in mind that these were not just thrown in there blindly. These are intentional uses that are intended to have a more walkable neighborhood over a longer period of time. All right. So the current R two X boundary is on the left. This is all of the properties that are zoned R two X today. And then on the right hand side is the recommendation that we came forward with on October second. During that October second, the the direction we were provided was to take a look at these areas to carry forward the R two X zoning district, but to leave the other areas within their current zoning. So again, that looks something like this in that same format. I will zoom in here in a moment. So really, we're breaking it down to sort of three areas that we're looking to rezone to R two X. On the left hand side there, this is Third Street on the north side, Sixth Street on the south, Seventh Avenue on the west side and Sixth Avenue on the east. In the middle one, that's Fourteenth Avenue running along Saint Mary's all the way down to Sixth Street. And then within the Falwell neighborhood, the the line coming south is where the Berkman stops essentially. And I'll go into current zoning here or the zoning around these parcels here in a second. And then in the Kutske neighborhood, that's Sixteenth Avenue on the west and Eleventh Avenue on the east and all the way down to the higher density zoning. So if I if I flip over to it, this is the current zoning map. So again, these look kind of odd when you just put put them on a piece of paper like this. But when you look at them in the context of the zoning around them, it makes a lot of sense. So the the parcels that are on the far left side there, they have R four zoning on the other half of the blocks. So vastly more intense zoning than R two X. Likewise, there's even a little bit of mixed use downtown fringe zoning district within that area. The next one in the middle. Again, this is the current zoning map. So in your last action on the north side there, you rezoned all of that to transit oriented development. So in in a perfect world, you would go from a commercial mixed use zoning district to a little bit of a step down into the R one. So it makes sense to go from transit oriented development to R two X to R one if 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 we are scaling it back. So that's sort of that step down into the neighborhood. On Fourteenth Avenue between the Berkman, the male owned properties Cottage Grove and then the legacy row homes on the corner there, there isn't a whole lot of gap between what's already multifamily and what's not. So it does make sense to carry that along Fourteenth Avenue.
Going to interrupt you for one second. I clerk, I don't know who's running the clock, but he still has six minutes left. We have fifteen minutes for staff presentation. Thank you. Go ahead.
And then on the far right there is Kutske Park Neighborhood. The other half of Kutske Park is already zoned R two X. And as you head south, there's R three and then T O D. So again, that's sort of where you see that step down from T O D to R three to R two X, same sort of thing. So putting all three of those side by side, the current R two X boundaries on the left, what our recommendation was on October second is in the middle. And then our updated recommendation based on council guidance is on the far right. The planning commission has reviewed the revised recommendation and unanimously voted for approval of this zone change. And community development is recommending approval of the city initiated zone change based on the findings found in the staff report. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
All right, we'll get back to you. Thank you. So I will open the public hearing on item G four, and I do have people signed up. If you're joining virtually, we'll keep trying, use the raise hand function or press star nine to raise your hand, but I have Sasha Gentling. State your name and you have five minutes.
Sure, Sasha Gentling. I live at eight twenty three Fourth Street Southwest. And I just have a couple of comments here. First of all, in order to put land to commercial use, you would have to tear down or some of these properties would have to be changed already from single family residential. So getting, you know, into the feel and the character of the neighborhood, I just feel like within Historic Southwest, having a veterinary clinic, having something of the like just really wouldn't sit well so far. But you know, it's one property at a time and then things change. So I'm going to start with now here with my written comments. So the rezoning from single family residential to low or medium density infill is for sure a politically charged issue. We're seeing it happen in Minneapolis as well. Okay. So we have seen also as residents, how this process has played out from the moment we received that three by five inch postcard in the mail notifying us of the rezoning of our one hundred and forty year old neighborhood to where we stand today, telling you that we don't want that. Historic Southwest sits next to one of the best hospitals in the world and has a close history with the founding of Mayo Clinic. And if there is one single neighborhood in the entire upper Midwest that should remain single family residential, it's ours. Can we not, as citizens of Rochester and Southeast Minnesota, be proud of our heritage? We should not have to apologize for that. We have something beautiful on display for anyone who comes and visits Rochester. Our neighborhood is again a beautiful and irreplaceable feature of our destination medical center. Our century old homes are a part of this destination. I feel you can walk through the through the streets. You can look around and admire the houses and our handsome, mature trees. Okay. And you'll walk past Dr. Will and Hattie's gracious tutor home at seven oh one Fourth Street, which used to be known as College Street. And you'll say, this is so special and there is nothing like this in the world. So we should be proud. Let's just be proud of what we have and let's keep our neighborhood intact for all generations to come. Now I do have a question for the council. I don't know if this is too soon to ask, but residents in Historic Southwest have begun a new petition to designate locally areas already designated historic by the U S Department of the Interior. So I'm asking for a clear process as to how to pursue designation of our historic as of our neighborhood as locally historic to match that which the federal government had bestowed in nineteen ninety. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I see somebody raising their hand, joining virtually by phone, a five oh seven two nine one number. I believe you can use star six to unmute yourself. We're gonna cross our fingers here. Again, five oh seven two nine one has their hand raised. Looks like you're joining by phone, star six. You're unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, but please introduce yourself and you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, council members and fellow citizens of Rochester. My name is Christine Formea and I live at one one two two Sixth Street Southwest. I do not support R two X rezoning in the Pill Hill Historic Southwest neighborhoods. I want to reiterate my previously stated objections about R two X rezoning. I believe it will lead to increased crowding, increased traffic and parking problems, decreased green space and decreased community amity and cohesiveness. I would like to directly comment on and rebut comments that I've heard at several city council and sub council, subcommittee meetings that I've attended personally or virtually about equity and affordability around R two X rezoning. I disagree with statements related to lack of equitable housing, diversity in the neighborhood and growth from historical inequity. Diverse people like me, an enrolled Native American woman, own and share spaces in our neighborhood. Our neighborhoods have grown and diversified since those those statements and things that came out in the early twentieth century. Has there been any measure of diversity and that growth within our beautiful neighborhoods? Other than the national census I participated in, I am not aware of any city of Rochester qualitative or quantitative measures that has looked at the current diversity of our neighborhoods. I feel that comments around R two X rezoning, increasing equity and affordability provides an incomplete and short sighted assessment and are disingenuous and untrue. Rezoning will result in higher density buildings and expensive rental rates. As we've seen with the Fourteenth Avenue Legacy Row Town Homes or Row Homes. That is economically accessible to only high income earners and further creates divisive wedges within our community and causes glaring socioeconomic divide. Constructing more buildings does increase the supply of housing. However, this does not guarantee equitable and affordable housing for working people and families, as many have suggested. Looking at this through an economic lens, increased supply of unaffordable housing may result in many unoccupied rental buildings, further resulting in economically distressed and uncared for properties, which is not what we have now and what we do not want to happen in our neighborhoods. In short, I'm saying that oversupply causes its own unintended consequences, consequences, which I don't believe have been considered as an unintended side effect of zealous overbuilding of expensive and unaffordable housing. Therefore, I ask the city council to reject R two X rezoning efforts for Pill Hill and Historic Southwest neighborhoods. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Marion Clumsky or Clumsky?
I will pass.
All right, Elizabeth Dunn? All right, is there anyone else joining virtually? Okay, anyone else who would like to speak here? I do have somebody else. Loringstead, come on up. I'm sorry. Paper got tucked away. Please introduce yourself. You have five minutes.
Hi, I team Rochester. The team is city council. The mayor and the team here listening and watching. I appreciate it. I'm Loringstead, L O R I N G S T E A D. Two thirty seven Fourteenth Avenue Southwest. I'm here to speak for compromise. As a team, you've got to give and take. That's what it's all about. I thank you guys for allowing the Berkman already take place. You've already given a little bit. The Berkman's there. That was a gift. The legacy is there. That's a gift. Now it's maybe time to suggest a compromise with what your R two X is suggesting right now. And here's my compromise I suggest. This is my experience at the Berkman. There's about six hundred and fifty people that live there at any time. We've been there since the start. I self proclaim myself ambassador because I need everybody coming in and out. There's been a couple thousand have gone through there so far. The experience of those people is this. Many are there, half of the people there like myself, they're for health reasons. And we thank you guys for allowing the Berkman to occur. Half are there cheering at Mayo. This is world renowned facility. This is unbelievable. But think of this, many of those who are getting healthcare, I'm just going to explain their experience. They leave the back door of the Berkman, go down Fourteenth Avenue. Please drive that before you make a decision. Please drive down Second Street to Fourteenth, Fourteenth Avenue down to Sixth Street. This is the walk. Dozens of us make a day down Fourteenth, go to Second or Sixth Street, take a left, walk off up along six six. And if your house coming back, not quite yet, you'd go down tenth, ninth, eighth, and many of us go down to seventh. Where I'm going with this is right now, the proposal I would make is take Fourteenth and Seventh Avenue and leave those, right now, when you're walking south, you see residential on the right, residential on the left, meaning west side, east side. It doesn't make sense to have somebody who's lived in a home for dozens and dozens of years to look across to a big change. Leave the avenues on both sides of the avenue alone. Leave the avenue on Seventh on both sides alone. And on Sixth Street, God, don't go to any more corners. Don't change the corner across from Falwell. You already have a legacy. Don't change anything along Sixth Street. So allow those who have been living there forever and in the Berkman, I should include this at the Berkman. Several dozen have ended up moving to Rochester because they thought they think it's such a peaceful walk down Fourteenth Avenue. Take a left on Sixteenth, go east and then come up on Seventh. It's a wonderful peaceful spot. In showing cooperation, team Yetzer, can I use your map? This is teamwork. This is both sides working together. He's allowed me to use this map to make this sense. If you could just show me this map. Thank you. I appreciate it. No one's got a pointer, do they?
Have you got a pointer on? I've got a thousand three cents. I don't have a pointer on me. What the heck?
Said, please just go to the microphone and describe.
You got a pointer? And by wait, I'm thinking, oh, look at this. And I was a successful surgeon for thirty years and never got sued, but I can't guarantee I'm not going to be shaking tonight. If I could look at that map right there. Here's the walking path and this is just I'm making. Here's Fourteenth Avenue right there. One side of the street or both sides are residential right now. You're suggesting one side stay residential, one go R two X.
Fourteenth Avenue is the.
Fourteenth Avenue is this. That's Fourteenth Avenue. This is Sixth Street. This is, I'm sorry, Fifteenth Avenue. Thank you, Brooke. I'm suggesting leave Fifteenth Avenue alone and I'm also suggesting leave Seventh Avenue alone. And God help us, leave Sixth Street alone. Don't come in here and do anything else on the corner. Directly to Yetzer, thank you. This is a walking area already. We can already walk to coffee shops. We can walk to veterinary clinic. We can walk to many spots you're talking about for a nice neighborhood. Please let us do this. This would be a nice compromise. I have thirty seconds. Thank you very much for allowing this to occur. I appreciate you for doing that. It's about teamwork. It's about collaboration. It's about making it happen. We're praying, even though the commission has already said, go with it. I was out of town. I can barely, I was not able to be there. I was with my team in Texas. Please reconsider this. Fourteenth Avenue, drive that seventh or fifteenth, drive it Seventh Avenue, Sixth Street. Don't change the reflection of the community. I made it. Godspeed.
All right. Oh, all right. Any final commenters? Come on up, please state your name and you have.
My name is Jane Kelly Ripper. I live at six oh four Ninth Avenue Southwest. My only comment is I'm confused about. Well, first of all, I understand the city planners wanting to look down the road a number of years. But we've had R two, I'm not sure if it's R two X or R two on the southeast side of Fourth Street. Roscoe's has been for sale for how long? No developer has bought it. I'm not sure of the name of the large apartment building on on the river behind the the baseball stadium. There are three homes next to it that have gone through several realtors and have not sold in several years. And so since we have R two zoning already in the city, why aren't the developers starting with that? And why aren't we waiting for those to become to become developed? And I know that there may be issues with people in the southeast not wanting the development either. I understand that, but I just don't quite get what the urgency is in moving the R two even further when it seems like it's pretty going pretty slowly elsewhere. Thank you.
All right, any final commenters? Come on up.
Mike Ackerman, seven sixteen Fourth Street Southwest, council president, mayor. At first, I want to thank you actually and thank those of you because by and large, the proposal has saved Pill Hill. So Dr. Camilleri's property, almost all of true Pill Hill is saved for now. I think many of us share a concern that is this just the first nibble? And if we get this, is the next one come then one block over, one block deeper and eventually we might win for now, but ultimately we're going to lose. So as you carved it out now, Historic Southwest and Pill Hill has been saved and I and I thank you for that. I share your feeling about Seventh Avenue though, and I would want you to think about Seventh Avenue as you propose it from Third Street to Sixth Street. I'm seven sixteen, the Badley and Stacy Rizza, they're right next door to the avenue. Mayo Foundation House will share, look straight out their east window of the foundation house and see all of Third Street up to Fourth Street coming up the hill get to be developed on the other side. I'm surprised they're actually not here to say, we don't really want to be staring at R two X right there. I, my biggest concern about allowing you to develop R two X on Seventh Avenue was actually just a traffic. Right now cars come flying up Seventh Avenue to Fourth Street. They don't stop. They fly in. The number of times I'm almost been picked off and many others will be in the, the traffic density on Seventh Avenue in particular with R two X. That avenue becomes a dangerous avenue and it's already a dangerous avenue in terms of that's that Seventh Avenue and Fourth Street intersection. So I'd love you to carve that out and preserve more of Historic Southwest because that's just gives you one road. And I know you won't go to Eighth Avenue because that allows you to cross trespass the Mayo Foundation House. You probably don't care about my house, eighteen ninety seven is the one right south of the foundation house. But you won't go to Eighth Avenue because that will trespass the foundation house. So I suspect that we're all not going to do that. So you've given a good bound, Sixth Avenue is. you've given a good bound, Sixth Avenue is already a convenient R two X boundary. If you think about all of the R two X developments that are from Third Street to Sixth Street on Sixth Avenue. So you've already got a natural boundary. So, so don't come one block in, maybe carve out the Seventh Avenue one from your R two X. And then I would say you've done a really great compromise because for the spirit of it, I think most of us who love Historic Southwest and Pill Hill and as importantly as us, the residents, our patients and our families love Historic Southwest. I think you did that with this new, with what you asked the zoning, with what you asked them to do and what the zoning commission, they got it seven oh with what you asked them. I'd just like them to get rid of the Seventh Avenue if you would consider that. Thanks.
Nope, you've already spoken and use your time.
Correction, I meant Fifty W.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. All right. Any final comments? I think that's the same person from the appeal. Okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you everyone for coming to speak and I will invite Mr. Yetzer to provide a response.
I just have one point of clarification and then happy to answer questions, but I just want to note the, the notes about the nationally designated Pill Hill or Historic Southwest. This proposal is completely outside of the nationally designated Historic Southwest or Pill Hill. So if you are looking for a natural boundary, this would appear to be what the folks were looking for in the first place. So thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications for staff? Go ahead, Ms. Dennis.
You just said this, so I, I don't want to. But so this is not impacting the historic, national historic areas that have already been established. I guess, okay. Um, and then just to go back in your earlier presentation, I didn't write down your exact quote, but it was something along the lines where it's outside, it doesn't impact. I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm not going to quote you correctly. I'm sorry, Mr. Yetzer, but this is, doesn't impact the nature of the historic buildings. I just want to, that's a huge.
Correct. The reason I paused with your first question anyways is because insinuating that the zoning impacts the historic nature of these properties is just not correct. So but, but if the question is, does this proposal stay outside of what is mapped as the national register? Yes, this is outside of that area.
Was the proposal that was given to us on October second also outside?
No.
No, so this one is, this updated one is now preserving that.
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, and I have one more, one more question. Um, back in twenty twenty one, we looked at racial covenants or racial documents inside of the owners. They are, was that looked at when you're doing the equity study about how people were deprived of living in this neighborhood because of their religion and other different issue, other different qualities?
Yes, that was a major component of our October second recommendation that was denied.
Thank you. So some modifications were recommended. We've obviously, this map reflects the conversation we all, we had with my sort of makeshift map to be thoughtful about that historic district. So you included one side of Fifteenth Avenue. Could you just comment on what helped make that decision to include one side compared to the other?
Yeah. So if you, if you put it on half of the block of Fourteenth Avenue, the, a, a street makes a really good natural divider for a zoning district. So if you're going to put it on the entire frontage facing Fourteenth Avenue, it makes sense to have it on the other side and then have Fifteenth Avenue be that divider.
Okay. And then for that little section you carved out, so I, I feel very strongly about that block across from Edison being included as R two X, which I've said before. But that additional little strip, how did you decide on that along Seventh?
The additional little strip, the entire east side of that strip is zoned R four. So significantly higher zoning than R two X.
Okay.
And so same thought process there of carrying that, it, it doesn't really make sense to have R four abutting R one as much as it makes sense R four abutting R two X.
Okay. And when commenters say things like they'll be looking at redevelopment, could you just add some context to that? I know you've done it in previous conversations, but this is not necessitating redevelopment.
Right.
Creates opportunity to.
Right. And we have, you know, the, the comment of commerce, for commercial to take place, there must be redevelopment is, is not correct. We have a number of vet clinics in Rochester that are right out of houses that are just reused without tearing down the house. So I don't necessarily agree with the notion that it has to be for redevelopment. You can also convert from a single family home to a duplex. That's likely the most common outcome. And then just keeping in mind that R two X is not large apartment buildings like folks like to throw out that there are, there is sort of a box created of how large it can be in terms of height, length, those sorts of things. Even the legacy row homes is larger than what the current R two X boundary would allow. So just keeping that in perspective.
Okay. Questions? Councilmember Keans?
There's two different things that I took out of some of the, uh, uh, public hearing. One was, I, I kind of agree with this. Boy, R two X really isn't taking off very fast in other areas. But the other one that I didn't agree with is we seem to have this appetite to continue to do this also. So I don't know about my peers up here, but I've about had it with, you know, kind of trying to figure out the maps. Can you comment on that idea of what is the timeline trajectory? Are these twenty year trajectories? Are these surprising to the staff that four years later, we're not seeing a big uptake?
Yeah. Yeah, I could probably do like a two hour presentation on that question. I, I'm not surprised, given that two of those four years were COVID. I'm also not surprised that it takes a while for folks to catch on to a new zoning district. For example, I don't think any of us would say TOD has been unsuccessful, but there's only been three TOD projects. There's been about that same number of R two X projects. So it, it's not shocking that it takes a while to get started. You know, some of the other things that we don't think of is every time we approve of a development on the edge of town, we're disincentivizing doing an infill and redevelopment because infill and redevelopment is always going to cost more upfront for the builder than greenfield development, but it's more sustainable for the city. So something to keep in mind as we're, you know, setting growth boundaries on the edge is that the more growth on the edge, the less infill and redevelopment pressures there are. So it's not shocking to me. The other thing is we didn't have an infill and redevelopment zoning district until two thousand nineteen. So by default, we don't really have someone whose niche this is, is to do an infill and redevelopment. So we're working through that to try to show how that can be a, a, a successful proposition and something we actually just talked with the Builders Association the other day was how can we better educate our local developers on utilizing R two X? Because it is a tool that should be tapped into more. Hopefully it is.
Okay. And, and the other one on zoning creep?
Yeah, yeah. Um, so again, I, I don't think, I don't think it was our intention to bring this back, even, you know, when we did, even in October second, we were asked to, to reanalyze the boundary and see if we did it in a fair way in two thousand, in an equitable way in two thousand nineteen. I think our recommendation on October second would have really undone what we felt like we did wrong in two thousand nineteen. So this is a compromise and I, and I think our team fully understands that. I don't think we're out here saying we don't have enough R two X boundary in the city and the whole city should be R two X. We, we have a good R two X boundary. But is it equitably dispersed in all four quadrants? No, it's not. And so this gets us closer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Palmer? Question?
So that last statement that we're trying to be equitable, the, the, my understanding, because I was on the council and we did this was we did it for economic reasons for density. Isn't that correct?
Well, we did it based on four things, close to downtown, grid pattern, and areas where the land was more expensive than the, than the structure generally speaking.
So that's not equity?
Well, it is once you look at why the areas are more valuable than others.
Okay, so let's go down this R two X path. We've had one house or one lot converted to R two X from the original plan.
We've had two.
Well, wasn't that one an appeal? Wasn't that a, a, a off the original R two X?
Oh, sure. Yes. Okay. Yes.
One. Yep. And so in theory, if I get this right, if I have to do two lots, I have to buy two lots to make R two X to build a forty foot tall building. I basically have to buy two of them, probably for five hundred thousand dollars to start the land cost. Would that be a good thought? Is that, am I thinking that correctly?
That sounds about right.
Okay. And so that might be really the real reason is economics that it's not working.
Right.
Okay. You mentioned duplexes. And so I know you can say it's a duplex, but that has a meaning in the building code and everywhere else. And, and if I remember correctly, if I want to make a duplex, I don't just put a mailbox up. I have two of them. I've got to separate one hour between the uses. I've got to have a separate furnace. I've got to have separate parking. Those are just some of the requirements to do a duplex.
Well, separate parking really goes away with, with our current zoning, but the rest of that I would agree with. Yes.
Okay. And then if we go back, the city council started this about four years ago. The city council could end R two X very easily. Couldn't they?
You would have to go through the same process. Yep.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Bransford, then Dennis?
A couple of slightly more technical questions, one involving compatibility. So R two X is zoned currently over both low density and medium density residential.
Yeah.
No.
If you bring up the GIS map, I can show you that. I don't know that we have, I, I, I can't share my screen currently, but I, R two X, the land use is generally I think it was called traditional core neighborhood is the land use. There might be a parcel or two that's that has medium density residential, but by and large it's in traditional core neighborhood and low density residential. Okay. Well, and, and, and in light of the fact that we don't have time to bring it up, in my looking at the GIS map, I did see R two X over medium density residential. And, and I, you, you could absolutely be right, but by and large, that's not the case. Okay. But it is, at least in some instances. So I, I'm cur, I'm curious if that's true, that it is straddling the line between R two and R three. There is a continuum of compatibility or a continuum of density, even though we can't calculate it for R two X between those two things. So how are we to decide whether or not a specific development is compatible with its surroundings, given that continuum? How would you make that determination? Yeah, I don't think there's a mathematical equation that's going to answer that for you. It's, it's going to be a case by case basis. Compatibility based on what's allowed around it, what's built around it. You can look at things like setbacks or heights, those sorts of things. You can look at things like architectural styles to, to determine compatibility. There's a number of things. The biggest thing that I think R two X does to maintain compatibility with a low density residential neighborhood is matches the setbacks. And that is not something that you see in a medium density or a high density residential district. So that is a big, that goes a long way to maintaining the feel of a neighborhood when the setback is consistent along the entire street. One other quick question, and I, I might be wrong in how I remember this, but is any development larger than a fourplex considered commercial from like a water utility perspective? So from a city, you, from a city utilities perspective, is that considered a commercial development? I don't know from a city's utilities perspective. From a building co perspective, it is considered commercial construction at some point. Yeah. Even if it's residential. Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis? Questions?
I had one question. Yeah. So I was prepared, well, I prepare for every meeting and, and the October second meeting, we got the proposal prepared and many people came to talk about that proposal. And I had, I felt very frustrated myself when we as a council were just given a, you know, as, as I often do, a motion that just throws, you know, a whole new look on, you know, what we're voting on, and then we're deciding really quickly what to vote on, or we're going to vote for this motion. And this, I'm just going to read one sentence from a resident who, who kind of sums up things I feel is feeling as well.
Is this a question?
It is a question. Yeah, for sure. Just a quick one sentence. This resident said, many of us who spoke against the rezoning in this October second meeting were shocked by how much goes on behind the scenes. We were incredibly surprised that at the end of the meeting, a revised map was suggested that had clearly been drawn up before we had even had the chance for a public comment. And it was a very long email, but that was one that really, so how much planning was put in? I'm just curious. I don't, I can't remember who proposed the motion to make this revised map that was given to city council on October second. Because I mean, it was new to me. I, I saw it for the first time. Was that something that staff had been working on? For, I'm just
No.
curious on, no, so, but staff was.
Staff, that is not something the staff had been working.
Oh, the staff didn't have anything to do with.
I drew it and I sent it to staff to ask them to project for our council who sets policy to consider a motion based on a sort of middle ground and connected zoning. And I've spoken, I spoke to it at the meeting before, but it came from me drawing circles on the map based on many factors.
Okay, but I, so I just want, I just, it catches me because I, I think a lot of things are done behind closed doors. And this was one of those where I, I just wanted to share that opinion and just see if, how much time was done.
No time. It was my map. I drew it.
All right, Councilmember Wall.
Thank you. A, a couple of compromises on streets have been suggested, and I certainly appreciate your, you can't hardly take a half a block unless there's a nice defined alley or something like that. That would be almost impossible. So if you take one side of the street, well, then you've got to take almost the whole block and then you've got the same issue on the next street. What kinds of, with the compromises that have been suggested, what complications does that offer the city?
Yeah, so I wasn't following all, all of the suggested changes necessarily, but I, again, I would go back to we like to have, like you said, we like to have a street or an alley as that sort of line. And, and that's really what the, our proposal does is has, has a street as, as the line of where we change zoning districts from something to a, something else. And so all of those proposed items goes against that. Is that something we can consider? Yeah. If, if that's the wish of the council, then, then we can go down that road, but that wouldn't be our recommendation.
All right, are we ready for a motion? Oh, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What is the major difference between R one and R two?
R one primarily only allows single family homes. R two allows up to a fourplex.
I just point of order, R two or R two X, those are different things?
Yes.
Those are different things.
Okay.
Very much so.
Yep.
Lot size, all the M D R?
Um, I think a difference of two thousand square feet, if I'm remembering correctly, from five thousand to three thousand, I believe.
Okay, so regardless of whether you're correct or not, there is a definite definition in land size between R one and R two along with that density factor.
Yes.
All right. Um, I loosely consider downtown between the sixths, Sixth Avenue, Sixth Streets, South and North. I generally consider the core neighborhoods, you know, fifty two to maybe Nineteenth Avenue and then up to Fourteenth, Silver Lake, and then down to the Beltline, Twelfth Street, for those of you who don't use Beltline or Highway fourteen. So as, as southwest, the area that we're talking about, maybe not the extreme southwest closer to the Beltline as historic with most of those other kind of close in core neighborhoods. Those other core neighborhoods have a mixture of R one, R two and R two X. Is that correct? Or do they just have R two and R two X? Because I think R one is missing from that north section of downtown, northeast and southeast and southeast and south sections of downtown. The only core neighborhood that has R one would be this southwest neighborhood. And I'm assuming that is based on the criteria you said, regardless of the square footage. They're bigger lots. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, um, yes, for the most part that is correct. I would hesitate to say like that, that this is the only neighborhood that has R one because you know, I would want to dig into those neighborhood associations specifically, for example, the southeast side of Slattery Park, I believe is R one, but primarily the, the core neighborhoods adjacent to downtown do not have R one zoning except for Historic Southwest and, and parts of Fallow.
Okay. Okay. That's that's it for my questions. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll present a motion, two-part motion to approve an ordinance amending amendment authorizing the city initiated zone change. C D twenty twenty-three zero zero nine Z C for the rezoning of parcels near downtown core. And then directing, second part directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance for first reading.
Second.
All right, councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
Yeah, again, this is one that's been hard to go through. There's really strong arguments on both sides, but I think this compromise of trying to order the R two X in southwest near the R three or near the T O Ds and that step function really makes a lot of sense, so I want to support that, uh, proposal.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
So, um, I mentioned my little frustration back on October second, um, voting for something that was just brought to us real quickly. I I feel, um, I hear the passionate words and the voices from people who have come and spoke back in October second and and today. The have articulate and and passionate about their homes and the city and history, um, preserving our cult, our community. But then I also, um, see the wrongs that have been done and the racial covenants and the and people who haven't been able to obtain homes like that for, um, for many, many, many years because of of discrimination. So I, um, am saddened because I, even though I hear the reasonings, um, what I, I hear the most is people just don't want it. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why they don't want it, but they don't want it in their backyard. They don't want it. Um, they don't want more density in their neighborhood. And I I challenge everyone just, you know, that we don't hear the voices of the people in the future. And Mayo is going to be growing and billions of dollars and and jobs coming here, and we're gonna need more homes. And we want to look at it not just, you know, the future, uh, for everyone. People in Ward six and every ward, um, have have had to look and 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 say, hey, our our community is changing and we have, um, we need more homes. I, this is a, this is an issue I think that we have to look at about us as a community. And the, uh, the housing complex that was putting affordable housing in in count in Ward five, I sat in the backyard with many, many residents and talked to them about how they didn't want that in their, and literally in their backyard, and they talked about the traffic and about all a lot of issues that. And now that it's built, it's the fear of the unknown was so huge and it's, uh, not the fear anymore, having it now built and having people have homes for generations to come. And I just think it's everyone's duty to to see that. We need to increase housing on all levels. And if I had could have, if I could have had more time to realize, I I think I would have gone back and and not supported the change because I feel that that we we don't want to make exceptions for people who make, and I'm just, I'm being a little bit stereotyping here, but higher income residents. Then and not making exceptions for everyone else in Rochester. So I feel this is an issue that we need to look at, uh, in the future to create equality and equity and, um, and avoid people, um, pushing out future homes for reasons they just don't want it. If it doesn't impact the historic nature of the area, as staff had said, which was one of my concerns. I want to make sure history is preserved, of course. But we also want to make sure people have, um, homes and and livelihoods. So, um, I would be voting for this because it's a step in the right direction. Uh, but I I I feel that, um, we could be doing better and we should in the future, um, do more to create house, homes. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dennis. Councilmember, uh, Bransford.
So I have a few prepared statements and I'm gonna read them, so, um, excuse me if I don't look up and make eye contact, but I want to make sure I get this, get this, uh, in the record. I'm gonna start off with saying I, well, I do not agree with the entirety of the revised map as pointed out by some speakers. I do want to acknowledge two technical reasons for it. First, uh, the revised map primarily, but not universally affects those houses whose property values won't exceed the cost of purchase and therefore be financially viable for infill redevelopment, which is one of the primary reasons for in two thousand nineteen, we had the map we had. So, uh, secondly, I do agree that the revised map also supports the city growth philosophy and the comp plan, although what Mr. Keen has, uh, pointed out, uh, to provide, uh, additional density, particularly al- along Second Street. But I have several objections, uh, and concerns. First is the contentiousness surrounding this process has been difficult to experience. Much has been said by many outside the neighborhood. I would like to point out that our ears often itch to hear what we wish to hear, whatever your sensibilities on social issues. These neighborhoods have embraced with open arms just deeds and done so in a way that is admirable. What I have, what I actually heard from my constituents is that they have a you nearly universal concern of compatibility and affordability. Hear that time and again. I don't hear any NIMBYism. I don't hear any, we don't want this in our backyard. I don't hear that we don't want anyone living in our neighborhood. Right? We do share the Berkman. We do share the rural homes. We do share Cod of Grove. We do share the Avani. We do share the Griff without reservation. So concerns of compatibility and affordability are completely reasonable objections. Everything else just muddies the water and is somewhat inflammatory. Or is inflammatory. The notion of equity as equal distribution has been brought up as a presumption for the rezone. But, um, that belies the fact that there is already a fair amount of R two X in the southwest. I lost my spot, all right? And is directly around the city core. It feels a little bit like a straw man argument, um, that, so let me reemphasize or emphasize that the revised map is not an introduction of R two X in the southwest. It's an expansion of it. That's a very important point. While near city core is indeed somewhat loose, the proposed rezones do depart from the city core and is far into what is formally designated as the Saint Mary's Place in the Gateway District. These are treated differently in the comp plan. So all that said, my biggest concern here is the lack of city council involvement and subsequent development approvals once a parcel has been rezoned. I am uncomfortable with a process that diminishes a citizen's ability to have a voice with me as their conduit with matters that can significantly affect their neighborhoods. I had reluctantly agreed with the rezone staff and or planning zoning approval process for R two X, primarily considering the U D C's built-in neighborhood protection standards, which I wish to commend staff for. Those are good things. However, my original concerns have resurfaced, seeing the process in action and especially listening to people's reaction as to the council's inability to weigh in on subsequent development. This is especially true considering some of the commercial uses in R two X that do not restrict traffic flow, location within a neighborhood and hours of operation. It's not saying that those are bad things. They very well may be good things. But they're not housing. Can be intrusive. And the fact that once a parcel is rezoned, R two X, that we don't have a say in the general development plan or any subsequent public hearings is very troublesome to me, very troublesome to me. Um, and so at some future date, I don't want to debate that here. This is the wrong place to bring up any kind of amendments or motions or or any kind of direction, but I would like to revisit that in future revisions of the U D C. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Bransford. Councilmember Palmer.
Well, it, there's a couple of things that have been said tonight that I disagree with, and one is that this was quickly or something was done behind doors. Um, this has very been upfront. Um, we've spent a lot of time listening, uh, with the planning and zoning meeting. The Pill Hill area is a is a special neighborhood. To me, it's like Summit Avenue in 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 Saint Paul. Um, if you've ever walked it, ever run it, it's, there's some beautiful buildings there, beautiful houses. It's 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 unique. Well, some of the houses, most of the houses were built before the Plumber Building was even built. And so you you think about that, and and I I disagree with with a lot of what's been said, but other than the fact that this is a special area for Rochester and it is not, um, I I I don't know how to 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 say, it's not like a nineteen nineties neighborhood that has a three-story apartment building. These buildings have been here for for a long period of time. These people who own these houses I have have to put their heart into them. They bought them. They, it's a, it's almost like another child to them, if not, well, never mind. In anyway, it's 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 important to them that they that they have those houses, and it adds so much to the quality of Rochester. Um, and so putting R two X in that area was would have been a crime. So I'm glad that we're not doing that. I don't see any need to have R two X in that neighborhood. Um, but again, it's a great neighborhood and 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 I want and proud that we're not doing that.
Thank you, councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Wall.
I, uh, commend the neighborhood for, uh, their care for the neighborhood and for wanting Rochester to be the very best place it can be. I have no question. I also commend the city staff for having heard the city council, having brought back, I think, a very reasonable, uh, proposal and wanting Rochester to be the very best place it can be. So, uh, I I I don't think there's anybody in this room who wants this to be any less than what we have and want a very bright future. I'm I'm glad that we were able to work together on the compromise that's, uh, on the table so that we can preserve the bulk of, uh, that Pill Hill neighborhood and, uh, provide some of what is needed for Rochester in the way of future housing.
Thank you. Well said. And I've already spoken extensively at the last meeting, so I won't be saying much more, but I will turn it over to councilmember Kirkpatrick. Comments?
I I do, thank you. Um, my biggest issue with the R two X going here is that there is no step-down function, Mr. Keen. We go from an R four next to an R two X, which I can appreciate. But then we go to R one, and I remember stating this in October. There are numerous blocks throughout this area on, um, the map that are R two. They exist as R two when you compare them to any other neighborhood in our city. They were downzoned to R one when zoning took place in nineteen forty. So I'm opposed to ignoring that fact. I also want to encourage everyone to get on board with the justdeeds.org. That's the website, justdeeds.org. You can actually go in and volunteer to help to remove those racial covenants. They actually stay on the deed deed to preserve the history of the deed because we have historic homes that the deeds need to be preserved, but an addendum is added stating that these racial covenants have been removed. So please, go on, do it for your home. Volunteer to do five other homes, justdeeds.org. So I want to make an amendment to the motion, uh, but first I want to also acknowledge what Mr. Bransford said. Yes, we need to revise the U D C. The council needs to be able to have a voice in general development plans and site plans because we are your voice. We are the liaison to city staff. We form a Y, okay? The staff is here doing an exemplary phenomenal job. The city council is here. And you all are the other leaves on the tree, and together we are the trunk that grounds us to grow into a great community. So I had to use a botanical analogy, of course. Um, so.
What's your motion?
Yep, I'm on page six forty and I got to return to six twenty-eight. So just thank you for your patience, but now we have a pop-up window. I'm I'm hurrying, council president. I see you looking at me. What did I say I had to go to? Six twenty-one?
Six twenty-eight.
Ruby, six twenty-eight. Here it is. Yes, presenter Ryan Yetzer. So the action requested that Mr. Keen made the motion for, and Mr. Palmer seconded, was to approve this ordinance amendment. Instead, I want to suggest that we continue this to a date certain, either December fourth or December eleventh. Direct directing staff to review the zoning of historic southwest and Falwell to consider those locations that might be appropriate for R two zoning. So we truly have a step down. R one, R two, R two X to R three or R four. And I believe that is going to give a lot more credibility to the awesome, uh, work that Ms. Ghentling said of actually trying to get a local historic preservation ordinance.
So just point of order.
For these homes.
Sorry to interrupt you, but you need to make a motion, see if there's a second, and then you can spend more time talking about it. But if there's not a second, we need to move on.
I thought I stated my motion.
Didn't.
I have to do it better than that, probably. Rambled on.
Meaningfully, but also we clear motion to see.
So, okay, so, um, the motion that Keen presented and seconded by Palmer was a
Motion to continue.
Motion to continue to a date certain, December fourth or December eleventh, directing staff to review the zoning of historic southwest and Falwell to consider R two zoning as well, where it is appropriate. Was that, was that right, guys? That's a motion.
Is there a second? There's not a second, but thank you for sharing your perspective and certainly future conversations to come.
Ball question?
Right, do we want a roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Esler, please call the roll.
Councilmember Keen.
Aye.
Councilmember Bransford.
Nay.
Councilmember Wall.
Aye.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Nay.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Dennis.
Aye.
Council President Carlson.
Aye.
There are five ayes and two nays.
All right, motion carries. Uh, but thank you, everyone, for all of your passion and and sharing feedback through email, phone calls, speaking, uh, hopefully we have landed on a pretty good middle ground. Nine, we will reconvene at nine fifty-five.
Recording stopped.
Is Social Ice, which had an attendance of about forty-two thousand five hundred people. And that had a direct impact, economic impact of around one point five million. That's just a few highlights. There's a myriad of other things that the special service district does in terms of keeping our downtown. Activated cleanly and feeling safe. So with that, I'll actually hand it over to Kathleen and she'll give you perspective of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Josh. Good evening, Madam Chair, Mayor, members of council. Consistent with what I said to you earlier today, the work of the RDA has been redefined, refreshed. By the input of the stakeholders, the residents, students. And the payers into the SSD as well as the restaurateurs and retailers. I have a deck that's been submitted to your package and in the interest of time, I don't think I will go through it all, but let me just give you a few highlights. And offer you an opportunity, if you would like to sit down and understand how we're revisioning. The the art, the work of the RDA, I'd be happy to meet with you individually. Let me go over a few strategic priorities. One. The stakeholders made it very clear that they want more from the RDA than the events. While many appreciate the events, they see the RDA as an organization that should really promote the downtown as a destination. So our number one strategic priority is to strengthen the brand of the downtown. Now, what do I mean by brand? It's not the classic marketing term, brand. But what we're using as brand right now is an area that has great dining, unique shopping and lots to do. If we can embed in people's minds those three things, we will start to see more traffic downtown. And everything we do ladders up to that, to be proof points to that supposition. The second strategic priority is to optimize the iconic events that we do. Optimize them for all stakeholders. So when we do an event, it's not a one and done. But we look at how we market it. Can we package it so that we create Thursdays as a weekend destination? So that Social Ice becomes a weekend destination. So we're helping the vendors, the brick and mortar. At the day, but also extending the economic value to the other stakeholders. The third, and I think I can't stress this one enough, is that we partner with other organizations to promote their events. The RDA could do events till the cows come home. But it will never be enough. But this community is very vibrant with many, many different organizations going on. And you could just look at our community calendar and you will see multiples of ten events a weekend. So when people say there's nothing to do in downtown Rochester, our third premise is there's lots to do and there are many proof points. So we we collaborate with those organizations to help them in increasing the impact of their event. We use our communications platforms to do that. The fourth one is increasing the marketing of downtown as a destination. If you go to Winona. You will see their visitor's guide and ad for Rochester. And it's, you know, come visit for, you know, come for a day. We're not far away. I am tired of Winona getting people from Rochester to come visit them. I want to reverse that traffic the other way and get them coming to visit us. So we are advertising in other people's magazines. Getting contacts in those communities, looking at La Crosse, looking at Winona, Zambroda, Cannon Falls, to get people thinking of us. Fifth one is to increase the focus on the weekend economy. Let's face it, we are at a two economy community. We are a Sunday through Thursday and then Friday to Sunday. We are, we're very focused on building that relationship and strengthening the relationship with Mayo Clinic. So to ensure that the relationship with the patient is as smooth outside the clinical experience as it is inside. But in addition to that, we really want to make those multiple thousands of people who come here on weekends. For conventions, for sports tournaments, feel the hospitality and the love of Rochester. And go away, experience and praising it and wanting to come back. Just in February, for example, we, there are twenty thousand visitors scheduled to come to Rochester. On the weekends from Friday to Sunday, twenty thousand people. That's twenty thousand people who can go to our restaurants, go to our stores, experience our activities, develop a good, you know, bring back the the good word of Rochester. And ensure that those conventions are rescheduled here. So we're partnering with Experience Rochester to make sure that we leverage that weekend economy. And the last thing I'd like to leave you with is, we're really working on, how do we enhance the downtown visual identity as a welcoming community? You look around. Each one of our store owners and our restaurateurs love the patient visitors. They welcome them. But what do we as a community say to those people? Do we have signs that say, welcome Mayo patients? Is there signage? Is there something sort of a civic representation of our hospitality? So we'll be working on that for the next, the next year. The other thing we're doing is seasonal promotions. And you will see, and the mayor mentioned that Here Comes Santa, which is an iconic event, I don't know how many years it's been going. A long time Santa seems to, he's got, he's directionally challenged and always lands on the roof of City Hall, old City Hall. But that will be the beginning of the launch of the holiday season campaign, which will include that day, the tree lighting. But every single weekend after that in December, Peace Plaza, the Chateau will be activated on Saturdays and Sundays. With activities for families, activities for kids to help those parents remind them to come downtown, have lunch on Saturday, do some shopping. Have some fun things for the kids to do. Sunday, free movies at the Chateau and go to brunch. So we're trying to keep the traffic flowing, keep the enthusiasm growing. And make sure everyone understands that downtown Rochester has great dining, unique shopping. It's not where you come to get your kids underwear. It's where you come to get the most exquisite gift, fun gift. And there's always lots to do. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And if maybe there is a place you get your kids underwear, I don't know, but I don't think so.
Maybe baby.
Maybe, maybe.
I don't know if they have underwear. Thank you. I stand corrected.
So we will do the public hearing and then we will invite you back up if there are questions.
Okay, all right. So I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on this item? Otherwise, if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. Final call. See no one. We'll close the public hearing and open it up for questions. Any questions for Kathleen, Ms. Harrington or Mr. Johnson? Or a motion?
So yeah, a couple of questions. Sorry. Thank you for giving me backup. So you were here for the study session, which a lot of concerns and questions and things were brought up at that time. After having some time to hear those concerns. How would you address residents who like, who have mentioned to me that they have the barriers where it is too expensive to bring a family downtown? Every weekend, even though they might want to, it'd be wonderful, but it's too expensive. It's too difficult. I understand with the parking, there is parking, but not accessible necessarily parking for kids to be able to, or whatever, many needs of people. So has has that been looked at to make it so it's a routine, like, hey, every, for Sunday, let's go to see a movie? And not be like, oh, I didn't budget for them wanting to have, you know, food afterward and whatnot.
Sure. Thank you. That's a, that is a great and important question. First and foremost, any event that the RDA does is free to the public. Even, for example, during Christmas, during, I'm sorry, during the holiday season. We are supporting the events that are happening at the Chateau. We're using RDA budget dollars to support the Chateau events because we truly believe too, the success of the Chateau is a success of downtown. So those on two weekends, for Saturday and Sunday, for two weekends during December, there will be activities for families. A fun winter workshop and then a movie, all, both of which are free. And we're supporting that because we believe the activity should be free for families. And I'm happy to say thanks to you all. There is free parking for two hours during the ramp during the weekends, but we remind weekdays. But we remind people all the time that it is free on the weekends. Now, it's challenging for some people who are juggling multiple children with strollers, et cetera, et cetera. But the ramps, you know, the first levels, oftentimes on weekends, we remind people, come, come early because they fill up. But we are really working to communicate the accessibility and the safety and the cleanliness. Because those are sometimes incorrectly perceived issues with downtown. So free events, we're committed to them. We will help other organizations raise funds, produce their events. We have a program called the Startup Grant Program, and that is really to help build event development capacity in our community. We're switching that around this year to be, to help make it a mentorship program. Where we come alongside the organization who wins the grant, if they want the assistance to have a mentorship. Throughout the creation of their event to stay on budget, be efficient, be effective, increase the impact. So that we will, our goal is to, we want to support organizations that can develop the future. You know, music festival in Rochester equivalent to the one in La Crosse. It's here. We just have to find it, nurture it, support it, mentor it all the way through. So that's a long answer to your question, but. We do try, we are conscious of those concerns. At some of the events like Social Ice, we know we need more food, but we're going to try to get some food that is lower cost for people. And trying to be mindful of the fact that. Not everyone can afford, you know. Twenty dollar meals for a family of five.
Another barrier that I've, I've experienced with my family and other people have mentioned is the lack of bathrooms. So if you have a young family, you, you know, there's, some kids do not use certain, I don't know, porta-potties. I don't know what the technical term is. But then, like, you have events downtown and then it's so hard to find a bathroom. Has that been, that for being addressed?
That is a, it's a, it is an issue. I think it's an issue for our community. There are some, but safety is a concern with some of them. Sanity, sanitation is a concern with others, but I can tell you, it's a line item in any budget we do for an event. I mean, for Thursdays, it's, you know, fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars for bathrooms. Social Ice, it's that much for two days. So yes, it's a huge expense. It's, it's an issue, I think, that is an issue in every community. How do you deal with that? We're dealing with through raising more money to support our events and have those facilities moved in and out every event. But I know they're doing the testing with the Chateau. I don't know what the, the outcome of that evaluation is, but it'll be very important to learn, learn from it. But it's very hard for some of our partners, say the Galleria, during Thursdays, their facility inside becomes the public restroom. So we try to divert traffic so that the Galleria is not the, the public restroom. And that people use the alternatives which are stationed around Thursdays downtown.
One more question, the last question. So I real quick Googled, what do you do in Rochester, Minnesota this weekend? And I was so excited to see a bunch of things pop up. So I'm really happy. It's all connected and easy for people who might not know community calendars or whatnot. They just Google what's going on in Rochester and it pops up. And I know you compete with online and all the things that many stores do. But I think what a lot of people in Rochester, if they're going to do an event that weekend, the Twin Cities is getting so close. With, you know, but I mean, it's a drive, of course, but it's so many events going on. Have you been looking at how to keep people here on the weekends that are, you know, like, hey, what's happening in Twin Cities this weekend? Kind of crowd.
Well, that's one of the reasons we work so closely with Experience Rochester. I think I have to, you know, give credit to them for really attracting great acts. And, you know, when you look at the convention schedule and the sports schedule. I think the promise of a sports center is critical for the economic vitality of our community. Sports tourism is a big economic driver. So I, I give them great credit for what they've gotten here. We want to partner with them to make sure we do our, our part in keeping those events here. Making sure the guests know to cross the skyway to the other side of town. I mean, we, we may be a small geographic area, but we're complicated. I hate this term, but the wayfinding in downtown Rochester is not easy. It is, it's a little more complex. It isn't when you walk it every day and you know it since childhood. But for guests, it can be very confusing. But. We have work to do. That can be done better if we continue as we are doing with the task force and working together, understanding our lanes. But understand where they cross over, how to leverage each other's resources and assets. We are doing more this year with a little bit less revenue than last year. We've halved the size of the staff. And I'm so happy to say that the staff we have now are multi-talented, but most importantly, they're brave. And they're willing to dive in and learn new things and willing to work with others. And that increases their impact. And it's been a joy for me to learn from them. It's a great opportunity, I think, to have fresh eyes and interim who, you know, what's the worst you can do? Fire me? With fresh eyes come in and look things over, at the same time, having this enormous amount of input from the community. The dialogues that happened were invaluable. And I think it opened a funnel. A confident channel of communication with the community. I mean, it's, a day doesn't go by where I don't hear about a better idea, a way to improve, a suggestion. Sometimes a complaint, but I try to turn those complaints into suggestions.
We don't know anything about.
Yeah, I know you don't know. But it was a great, I thank you for your leadership and making that happen and allowing it to continue.
Councilmember Keen?
I have a question for a council, or a council for our attorney, just to make sure, is my understanding coming here is that. We have a special service district under state law, which says part of the special services, you must have a yearly public hearing. But we also have membership who has voted to say this is how they set their assessments. What, when I'm voting on this, I want to make sure that I believe my thing is I'm endorsing that. Their backup, but I want to understand, is that what we're doing or is there something here that this? I, I know they're using the public ability to use taxes. So I think that's why it has to go through our, our authority here. But I don't believe that we treat this the same way we would levy and start debating about whether four percent is right or two or six. I believe that's outside our realm.
Thank you, Councilmember. I would agree with that suggestion. And would suggest that you not make it more complicated. It's not like a levy conversation. And you are essentially approving, signing off on what they otherwise have agreed to and approved.
Okay, so I, I'll let other people speak, but I am.
Ready for a motion? After Councilmember Palmer?
I'm gonna make a, I'll make a motion.
Oh, Councilmember Kirkpatrick has a question.
Thank you. This question is probably for you, Ms. Harrington. I've gotten a few emails and complaints about the four percent tax. I understand that it's the RDA board that has set that percentage.
No, no.
Okay. The four through eight we have set.
It was set in two thousand six when the RDA district, special service district was reauthorized. At that time, because there was not opposition of up to thirty-five percent of the landowners or thirty-five percent of the value. It goes into place. And as part of that, it was a minimum of four percent or a maximum of eight percent. So they self-imposed. The parcels in the district self-imposed the four percent to eight percent. The board is suggesting four.
Got it. Yes. Okay. Sorry for asking you to get up. Okay. So then my question is. The, the board is self-imposing four. I'm hearing property owners in my section of the ward saying four is too much. Do the property owners have a way to say, we don't want four through eight anymore. We want, we want three through six.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, they would have the opportunity to do that when the existing authorization expires, which will. The reauthorization would need to be happening in two thousand.
Got it. Okay. All right. That, that's great. Thank you so much.
All right. Are we ready for a motion? Okay.
Motion, adopt in resolution authorizing the imposition of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars in service charges within the downtown service district for twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All right, Councilmember Palmer, you have the floor.
Ms. Harrington, thank you very much for all you do. I downtown quite a bit and it's nice to see the ambassadors. It's nice to see it clean downtown and, and the safety of downtown is important. So I appreciate all the effort that you do. Thank you. Thank you.
And since others couldn't hear from Ms. Harrington. At our study session earlier, we had a chance to hear an update about the downtown task force and all of the work. That our city and other partners, including the RDA, are doing together to really respond to. The COVID pandemic, but also just making sure we're continuing to. Make this a really amazing and vibrant place. So just really appreciative for all your work and comments earlier today. Councilmember Wall.
Thank you, Ms. Harrington, for bringing up sports tourism. I know it wasn't an RDA event. The Rochester Youth Basketball Association, the past two days, held their Early Bird Thanksgiving tournament or something like that. My granddaughter's Woodbury turn, team came down. There were hundreds of teams. Most of them had Twin Cities names. So they are coming from the Twin Cities. They stayed in every hotel. They had fourteen courts going at the volleyball center. They were using all the courts at the RCTC. They were in Byron and I think they were in another small town, just so they could get all of these kids. And so I know restaurants did very well, the hotels, and I think Shields did well too.
One of the things we're going to do, Councilman, is to provide hotels with signage, welcoming the, the particular group that's coming. And with posters for our retailers and for our restaurateurs if they want it, so that they're very well informed of who's coming, who the customer is that particular weekend. And be able to maximize that value.
Thank you. Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you for remembering. I just want to say thank you as well. And it, it's, it's hard for me to hear. That people don't know about parking and people don't know about bathrooms. Like since eighth grade, when I would walk through the Kaufman subway to West Ford to get my braces tightened. And then walk back through the subway to Central Junior High. It's like, I have known downtown like the back of my hand. I know where each one of the bathrooms are. I, I know where each stairway is for every parking ramp. I know that every parking ramp has a, an elevator for accessibility. I appreciate the work that the Clean and Safe ambassadors are doing to keep things clean. There's a couple of restaurants down there that text me immediately when something is going on and I turf it off to Public Works. I get down there and get this handled. And I just really appreciate everything that's being done. But when I choose to meet clients downtown for, for personal things. It always astounds me that nobody knows where to park. And, you know, when, when I go out to Fleet Farm, I kind of know that area. I don't go there very often. I hit Costco maybe four or five times a year. But I, I don't know how we can pump that up, some kind of a fun video about where the ramps are, making it easy. But I, I grew up knowing that parking was free after five and on weekends. And I don't know if it's just us old school Rochester people that know this. But how hard is it to get a community to know free after five or four oh one? And all weekend long. And it's, it's mind boggling to me. But I'm so biased because I know this so well and I'm so thankful that this is my ward too. So I commend all the work that you're doing and we, I guess we got to do more. And that's okay.
Yeah, I just think one of the challenges is to help the residents in the outer ring of downtown know to come downtown. Because they don't have to know about parking. But if, if we make them want to come here, then they'll start to learn. So yes, we have a lot to do with the naming. And I know the Walker consultants is going to look at the naming of the ramps and some things like that that might be helpful. But we can just help our neighbors in five five nine oh two start coming down more and a little bit further out, come down to downtown. They will start to know and help spread the word. If we can just get our own people contiguous to downtown. Seeing the great restaurants, fun shopping and lots to do, we'll be definitely on our way.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis?
Okay, just real quick, I do have something to say. Just a point of clarification. The question has been called, is that correct?
No, no.
Has not been called. Okay. So we're, we're still in question?
There's a motion.
Been a motion, so you can discuss.
Well, that, that, yes, okay. Well, I'm just bringing it up because I love hearing every word you're saying. And I think it's phenomenal. But I'm just saying the council for consistency wise, once the question has been called, usually.
So there's been a motion and Ms. Harrington is acting as part of the city team.
Oh, I'm.
In this scenario, she's not the applicant, so she is able to speak.
Okay, my, my mistake. I'm just always checking them. I just don't want to pick favorites. You know, I, I do enjoy immensely your, your commentary. No, I, I wanted to just bring in, a lot of the concerns had been brought up in a lot of things. Actually, we ran out of time. It was such a packed study session today. But I believe the role of the council is to amplify concerns and amplify ideas and of residents. And so we need to be critical to help grow and bring ideas and the needs of residents to, to the table. But I just, I just want to say, I, what I've been hearing, the changes that you're proposing, the branding, the seasons, the themes, the celebrations and the welcome signs. I'm just so excited. I feel everyone likes to see their welcome. So I think that's a, would be a wonderful addition. And the routines, I, with my kids, we always went Wednesdays to ABC Toy Zone for a, a program for reading. And we did it every single Wednesday. And to have that kind of consistency where it becomes a habit, something that's going to be built in, I think would be wonderful. And I just, just want to say, yeah, thank you, the free events and things, the biggest concern, I'm just reiterating, not the biggest concern, but. Is just affordable stuff downtown. So even though the event's free and parking and we can do a lot of things, it's just. It's hard for, for people who are struggling to justify doing things that cost a lot of money. So. But thank you for all the work. I am really excited to see how hopefully downtown just changes and drives. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you so much for staying late with us. So I do need a motion to suspend the rules to allow for item G seven, which is a public hearing to start after ten fifteen.
Go moved.
All right. Any discussion? Councilmember Palmer?
No.
All right. We need a super majority here. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Moving on to item G seven. Which is the twenty twenty-four master fee schedule. Mr. Parrish, you're up.
Council President, Mayor, members of council, this is an annual exercise, adopting your fee schedule. This really reflects the budget. We do this a little bit earlier, given the, the hearing notice requirements and the need to adopt an ordinance. So what we're requesting for action this evening is to adopt the modified fee schedule. So approving an ordinance establishing the twenty twenty-four master fee schedule. And then directing the city attorney office to develop the ordinance for first reading at the December eleventh city council meeting.
All right, thank you. So the city is the applicant here, so there is no applicant to speak. I will open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to speak on item G seven? And if you're joining virtually, use the raise hand function or press star nine. All right, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions for Mr. Parrish? Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
I'm just curious, on page six. On page six eighty-four, about midline, no, at the upper top. Sidewalk approach pedestrian ramp, the approach three inch by two minutes driveway per square yard. The cost like more than doubled. And I kind of went through this, not really with a fine tooth comb, but I just noticed there's a couple of things that doubled. Is that just supply or is it the fact that? By two minutes is now considered because of the components it's made with, just more polluting? Or is there, are there extra charges? Or I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I mean, typically on, on charges like that, specifically the public works charges, there's a couple of things they're looking at. It's predominantly related to cost recovery. And so they've estimated what it, you know, costs for time and materials in order to do that. And so that charge is a reflection of that. Other items are, now this specific one per se, but other charges. Are often related to some indexing that's done, particularly for some of the construction items, and they just tie it to the engineering news record index. In terms of what construction costs are projected to increase in a given year.
Got it. Thank you. Great. Other questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion. Prove the ordinance exception in the twenty twenty-four master fee schedule. And number two, directing the city attorney's office to current ordinance for the first reading on December. I'll make a motion. Prove the ordinance exception in the twenty twenty four master fee schedule and number two, directing the city attorney's office to current ordinance for the first reading on December eleventh, twenty twenty three.
All right, councilmember Palmer, but and then councilmember Kirkpatrick, do you have the floor? You have the floor, councilmember Palmer.
Enough said.
Right, other comments, discussion? All in, oh, councilmember Dennis?
Comment, yeah, so this is a small print and it's a lot of information. I I think in the future it would be nice to have a study session or some kind of things that we could really talk about, and if these fees are each one, why they're set the way they are. So I just wanted to put that in the in the universe here to see if we could do that in the future, just so for next year, if there is changes that need to be made, we can do that more easily. Thank you.
So I know the changes that are reflected had been planned in advance. I don't know if Ms. Turi or Ms. Elms wants to speak to why the changes have happened.
Council president, um councilmember Dennis, councilmembers, I would just say that um if the city council would like to go through every single fee with a fine tooth comb, that would really be contrary to how your city charter works and how we bring forward items with the professional staff that understand the costs that are associated. Um, many of these also align with five-year uh plans that the utilities bring forward for rates in order to be able to have the appropriate cost recovery to be able to operate.
All right. Did we do a motion? Okay. Oh, wow. All right, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to reports and recommendations. You have a point of order? Yeah. Okay. So we have the twenty twenty council calendar and updates to the council rules, a procedure and code of conduct, and we spent a study session on this recently. I will turn it over to Administrator Zolms.
So you order now, I'm sorry, maybe I should have done it a little bit earlier, but I see that Mr. Widman has come back. I see that Mr. Haberman has come back and I know why you're here and I'm super jazzed about it.
That's not a point of order. There there are the next item.
I know they're the next item, but I have a funny feeling that H one is going to take longer than perhaps H two, and I'm wondering if we could flip the order. I don't, can we do that? How do I do that?
Waiting for H one.
Well, yes, yes, we do. I understand that.
In the order, it's been said already.
Yes, and I was.
You would have to motion to suspend the rules to reorganize the agenda and it needs a super majority.
Move to suspend the rules to take H two before H one.
I'll second.
All right, go ahead. You have the floor.
I think I've said everything already.
All right, any other discussion? Councilmember? No? All right, we'll vote. All in favor of motion to suspend the rules to switch the order, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
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 All right, motion carries. So we'll do the urban forest master plan. And we have Paul Widman and Jeff Haberman here to present.
I we, I hope we live up to that uh buildup and uh change here.
Hundred and fifty pages.
Right. Uh, so we uh really plan on keeping this brief. We've presented uh the plan to council in a study session. Uh, we just want you to know that we've taken the feedback and put it into action and you'll see it in in the changes. And I think some of the uh major feedback we received was uh um implementation of the plan, what that looks like and what it would look like a year to year when we do budget planning. We want you to know, like so many things in our department, we will adapt according to the resources available. I think we had a a really good example of this over the past several years when in two thousand sixteen, when the Parks and Recreation System Plan was approved by the Park Board and Council, there was a hundred million dollars worth of uh improvements needed to the park system to meet the needs of our community as it is now and to prepare for the future. That did not come from with any funding at the time that it was approved. It gave our team a time to go to work on the plan. There were a lot of uh program implications and and strategies uh in the plan that we implemented, uh everything from uh introducing kids to parks through our go play uh explorer trailer to partnering with the SAC program to uh increasing our partnerships and strengthening partnerships throughout the city. So we do not sit idle and that's the case with this plan. In fact, uh uh over the past several months, uh you using uh the uh goals outlined in the plan, we are able to receive uh unofficially, we'll soon be able to announce that uh we have one point nine million dollars in grants towards this effort. And uh so I just want you to know that uh we will work with the city administration and the park board to implement the plan as we are funded and and it's not to say that we won't be bringing requests in front of council. But yeah, we are not uh here to say that uh uh it it needs to happen immediately. As I said, we experienced that with our system plan. Uh, we uh over the past several years have put uh internal resources towards this effort. In two thousand fifteen, we transferred one of our uh landscape technicians from golf over to Parks and Forestry. Uh, following that, uh there were three additional positions through retirement that we uh repurposed or uh reclassified and transferred at the same time over to Parks and Forestry because of Emerald Ashmore and other needs and other priorities. Not to say that golf didn't uh uh suffer a little bit for that, but uh we 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 found other ways to address our uh golf maintenance through our seasonal employees. And at the time, we were under a lot of pressure to reduce our expenses in golf. So uh that's just a couple of examples of how we have addressed this and how we will continue to uh work on this internally. But we definitely do want to consider this a partnership. And with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Jeff Haberman to our city forester to review the changes uh since we last visited.
I do have a power. Okay, there we go. All right. Thank you, council president and council members. Um, my name's Jeff Haberman. I'm the city forester in the Park and Rec Department. Uh, many of you may have seen that this is a condensed presentation uh uh that I've given before in coordination with Planet Geo, who helped us uh come up with the Urban Forest Master Plan draft. And which I'll just refer to as the plan from here on out, but this plan includes a variety of long-term goals, strategies and priorities that will help us achieve optimum levels of urban forest management. We do not consider the plan approval, as Paul said, a commitment to fund the plan, but rather the plan will aid the department in strategic and operational decisions uh for both day-to-day and long-term planning efforts. So this is a timeline of events related to the formation of the plan. It all kicked off in March of twenty twenty. Uh, we arrived at our final draft in June of twenty twenty one. Um, last year in November, we went to council study session. You all provided feedback that we will address today later on in the presentation. Uh, we only have one box left to check and that's uh hoping for city council approval uh of this plan. Most of you have seen this quote already uh in previous presentation. It's a quote by a professor of arboriculture and an icon in urban forestry research, James Clark. I believe this statement speaks to the fact that trees are critical infrastructure that provide tangible benefits to urban centers and that we need to think of them as being every bit as important as other city infrastructure and not just think of them as something nice to have. Uh, urban forests provide a myriad of benefits. Uh, some of the most valuable benefits include carbon sequestration, energy conservation, pollution reduction, mitigation of the urban heat island, improved human health and stormwater mitigation. And increases in technology now allow us to quantify the value of these benefits. The iTree software was developed by the U S Forest Service and it's a peer-reviewed tree benefit estimation software suite of tools. We completed an iTree assessment of the forty one thousand trees that made up our public tree inventory when we embarked on the creation of this plan. Ecosystem benefits were calculated. The report showed that these forty one thousand trees provide nearly one point three million dollars in benefits annually, which equates to about thirty one dollars per tree. Over seven hundred thousand of that is in stormwater management, helping to mitigate twenty seven million gallons of stormwater runoff, sequestering the carbon dioxide equivalent to the emissions of nearly four hundred vehicles annually, saving the energy equivalent of the usage of three hundred and twenty nine family households annually. Our current public tree inventory contains fifty three thousand trees. That would be one point six million in equivalent annual benefits. So the primary framework of the plan identifies important goals relating to each of these six different categories and identifies strategic actions to attain those goals in each category. Some of the highlights of the plan include that it recommends and identifies resources needed to attain a seven-year pruning cycle. It recommends and identifies resources needed to set a thirty five percent canopy cover goal citywide. And it recommends that the city consider a tree preservation policy. This plan recommends increasing canopy cover to thirty five percent citywide in order to capitalize on the ecosystem benefits. Our twenty twenty canopy cover citywide was calculated at twenty eight percent. And it also revealed that sixty five percent of that canopy exists on private property. Uh, it estimated that there are two million trees citywide that provide over sixty six million dollars in annual benefit. Reaching the canopy cover goal would require us to plant eighty four thousand additional trees citywide. Sixty percent of that would be would be the burden of the city to plant and the remainder would have to come from private property investments. Coincidentally, we continue to do an iTree canopy assessment annually and we are learning that the city is losing about one percent of canopy cover annually. This is in part due to Emerald Ashmore and the fact that we remove more trees and we're able to plant each year. Based on this information, we would have to plant a hundred and eight thousand trees to get to that thirty five percent canopy cover today. So uh the urban forest master plan has evolved into a forty-year timeframe. Initially, it was set up at a at a twenty-year uh timeframe. Uh, phase one goals would include attaining a seven-year pruning cycle and adopting a no net loss of trees policy. This could include additions of up to five arborist and associated equipment needed to do that. Uh, alternatively, we could meet the seven-year pruning cycle by increasing contractual services. Uh, or as Paul mentioned, finding ways to um get grant money to help cover that gap. I would did want to mention the department is already being proactive by diverting park staff during the winter months to help bolster the number of people we have to work on pruning and increase our pruning numbers. We're also proposing a no net loss of trees policy in phase one. Funding for tree purchases would need to increase to a minimum of a one-to-one replacement policy. I did want to mention that Green Step Cities initiatives identify pathways to help cities take local climate action. In fact, the Gold Leaf Program proposes that cities would replace every tree removed with two to three climate resilient trees. Uh, I just briefly want to talk about these graphs. In graph one, um and if you look at phase one, so the first half of that, the orange line shows the loss of canopy if we continue to plant trees, plant less trees and we remove each year. The gray line shows how the tree numbers would level off in phase one if we adopted a no net loss of trees policy. And in the second graph, we're simply showing how pruning numbers need to increase as arborists would be added. During phase one, we would need to work up to pruning fourteen thousand three hundred trees each year. And currently, on average, we can prune about five thousand trees a year. And here I wanted to focus on phase two, so the second part of these graphs, which phase two would simply include um adopting the canopy cover goal. So in the first graph and the second, phase two, the second part of the graph, the gray line shows the total tree numbers if we adopt the no net loss of trees in phase one and we adopt canopy cover goal in phase two. The orange line shows the effect on tree numbers without the net no net loss policy, but the approval of the canopy cover goal. And then the blue line shows the effective total tree numbers if we supported neither the no net loss or the canopy cover goal. And the second graph shows how pruning numbers would need to increase as we planted the additional trees and had to maintain them. The number of trees we prune each year would have to increase to twenty one thousand five hundred trees annually. Again, this plan is a guide that provides flexibility to advance or extend the timeline, pardon me, for completion and year-to-year budget flexibility can be accomplished by contracting portions of the work if necessary. So the last time uh we met with city council in the study session, um we received the following feedback. Um, you had expressed interest in us finding ways to be more flexible for residents to be able to work on trees that abut their property. So we acknowledge that there are state statutes that allow for self-help and what that means is that every person, every landowner in the state is able to prune a tree that that reaches over the property line and affects their property or their ability to join it, uh enjoy their property. It's called self-help. And so we would be able to implement that and allow people to prune trees up to the right-of-way property line or to where their property ends. Um, we would also would propose that we could initiate and promote trainings uh which we're currently doing through our citizen forester and citizen pruner. Uh, but we would make this more available to people and let them know that this is an option uh if they want to be involved. Uh, with respect to the funding, um you had asked us to seek alternative funding sources and um as Paul mentioned, we're currently in the process of final finalizing more than one point nine million in urban forest grants to be implemented over the next five years. I think this speaks to the state and federal government's commitment to providing equitable access to the benefits of urban forests. We are also in the beginning phase of exploring revenues that could be generated by selling carbon credits for our ongoing tree planting efforts. Of course, any of these initiatives would be worked out in cooperation with city administration. In closing, I want to remind council that the Urban Forest Master Plan supports both the park referendum language and the city of Rochester's strategic priorities. The Urban Forest Master Plan is an action plan that will help improve the quality of life for our residents by addressing social equity, economic vibrancy, and will provide provide for sound environmental stewardship. In conclusion, I truly believe that the cities, that cities leading the charge in sustainability and addressing climate change around the world understand the value of maintaining healthy urban forests and understand the value of the ecosystem services provided by trees and that urban forests and access to nature are intricately tied to improved human health. Today, we are seeking council approval of the ur- Urban Forest Master Plan. Thank you for this consideration and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Haberman. Are there questions? Councilmember Palmer?
Well, a couple of them. Um, phase two, you're talking about hiring seven new arborists. Is is that what you're asking for tonight?
We are not asking for a financial commitment to the plan. Rather, we're just asking to have the plan approved so that our department can use this as a guiding document on decisions. But that is weighing out what we would need to do to reach that canopy cover goal.
Okay, so you have one point nine million dollars of grants coming supposedly. You got five years that you have, you have it over. My understanding, there's three different grants. Is one, is the, are they all tied to the census areas?
Yes, that is correct.
So one section of town is going to get one point nine million dollars for the grants and the rest of the city is not?
Yes, and that money would be split between tree planting on both private property, public property in those areas and then also um tree maintenance and tree removals.
And tree removal. So if I have a house in a low census area and I have a big tree in the backyard, you're going to come and take that tree out for free?
No, it, we would be talking about removal of public trees and maintenance of public trees, so the trees along the street. We will, one of the grants focuses to plant trees on private property, but none of that money would be used for tree maintenance or tree removals on private property.
So a certain section of town, a very small section of town, is going to get one point nine million dollars to plant trees. And if I remember correctly, isn't this side of a park area, one of those areas?
Yeah, so basically it's from the railroad tracks on the north side of Civic Center Drive down to crossroads or Highway fourteen. And then from about Fourth Avenue Northwest to uh and then from about Fourth Avenue Northwest to East Circle Drive. It would be that rectangle.
And and you're you're telling me that that area doesn't have any trees?
No, that area was identified through the federal government's Environmental Justice Initiative, and so those dollars are available because of that, and all the money is to be used in those areas.
And, okay. It it's just seem, so is there any matching to this grant, or is it just one point nine coming to us in this certain area?
Yep, no match.
No match whatsoever?
On any of it. Yeah.
So are you going to hire new employees, and then when this gets done, you're going to send them down the road?
No, the idea would be all this work would be contracted. This, we don't have the capacity to take on the additional tree planting or maintenance currently, so we would contract all of this work.
So this this tree master plan is just for this one section of town?
No, the grants are specifically for this section of town. The master plan is a comprehensive plan for the entire city.
But you don't have funding for that?
Correct.
I I guess that's the problem I'm having is that I have a plan, I have no money. It's 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 really a wish with with nothing to it. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I guess we've known that that's been the hurdle, the financial commitment that goes along with it. But at the same time, we would like an approved plan so that we can use it as a resource to help us in making decisions, to potentially receive other grants to help fulfill other aspects of the plan.
Well, I'm going to change a little bit here. You have in in one of your statements, it says acknowledge that the state statute allows for self-help.
Yes.
Well, I don't think we have to acknowledge it. If it's a state statute, you should be able to allow somebody to fix their own tree.
We should. Traditionally, we've only allowed certified arborists to do work to publicly own trees so that there's a level of expertise.
So now the state law has always said I could do my own tree on my boulevard?
Yes, that's correct.
And so we were violating the state law before?
You could look at it that way. I would say we didn't promote the fact that that was.
Well, the frustrating part for me is is that we've called many different times and people who said I have a low tree, and we're said, well, we don't have the time or money to go fix it. But you can't touch your tree because if you do, there's a fine.
The statute would only allow.
Wait, wait, am I wrong? If I touch my tree, if I would have called you a week ago, you would have said, yes, I'm going to find you.
We have no fine in place for that work. We just try to encourage that people hire certified arborists to do that work.
So you're telling me that no one at Rochester's been fined for touching their own tree on the boulevard?
Correct.
Is that true?
Illegal removals, we've gone after people for illegally removing a tree.
For pruning a tree? No.
No, and it happens all all over the place.
Mr. Knigberg, is that true?
You need to be at a microphone.
I can think of one example in the Aspens area up on Fourth Avenue or Fourth Street area, by Wimbledon Hills area, that we pushed for a severe fine and cost for replacement tree because it pruned every limb up the entire tree and killed it. That's a tree removal, basically, not a pruning activity.
I'm not an arborist.
Those trees were topped. Yeah, that is true.
I'm not an arborist, but but.
So they were asked to plant replacement trees for those trees because that work did not consist with industry acceptable standards for pruning.
But they could do that by the state law?
No, they can't. They can only prune what crosses on over the property line and affects the use of their property. They still would not be able to, by that statute, enter into the right of way and remove branches on the tree. So we would address that through.
If it's hanging over the sidewalk but not into the person's private property, then.
Then they would not be allowed by statute to do that work because that's not affecting their property.
Well, two minutes ago, you said that you could do your own boulevard.
No, I said you can prune the tree up to the property line. So they could prune branches that were affecting their property that crossed over their property line. That's what that state statute allows for.
So in in my thought process in here, and I'm confused by this because we have such a small area, why don't we just call this a special area forestry plan? Since we have one point nine million dollars being spent on a very small area of Rochester.
Well, the Urban Forest Master Plan is separate from the grant. The grant monies are helping us achieve increased canopy cover in those small areas, but nevertheless, they're helping us attain, you know, greater canopy cover numbers, and it's allowing us to get tree maintenance done that we can't otherwise get done with the current levels of staff.
But you don't need a master plan to do that?
Well, no, the the grants are simply a vehicle to get portions of the master plan done. The master plan does not only relate to that area. The master plan is a citywide comprehensive plan.
But you only have money to do a small section?
Yes, we got we obtained grant money to do work in those areas.
Would my guess about one out of one, two, three percent of Rochester?
I wouldn't know that. It's a small percentage.
I'd say three percent.
Perhaps.
Councilmember Palmer, I have lots to say in response to you, but because we don't have a motion yet, we're going to continue on with other.
I'm asking questions. Am I allowed to ask?
You are asking questions. I just am wanting to respond. It can't because we haven't opened discussion yet. So are you done with your questions? Because there are others that have questions.
Sure.
Okay, all right, Mayor Norton.
So as I, for one, I'm excited that you're doing this. One of the complaints that I've gotten from residents this year had to do with projects that we've been doing in the community. I think they were park projects, actually, where we took down rows of trees over by Broadway in the mall area to put in a path. If we approve this moving forward, does that mean that as part of our obligation, we will be, if we cut down trees, we will be at least replacing them or perhaps replacing them plus as part of the project cost?
I cannot speak for Public Works projects, and I'm not familiar with exactly what project you're referring to where trees were removed.
Big trees.
Ninth Street?
No, Broadway and Twelfth was a Public Works project. Okay, Public Works project along Broadway and Ninth. A path over there by the mall area or the, what's the area?
It was the bike, it was the bike trail that circled from the north side of the Savers area southeasterly and then came south by Andy's Liquor. A lot of Norway spruce were removed or white spruce, and then also crab apple trees.
Okay.
West side of Broadway.
Okay, yeah.
We did receive a lot of complaints about that, and my question is, will this policy require our city to replace trees that they cut down either one to one or one to two, whatever? Am I understanding that correctly?
If we were to adopt a no net loss of trees, the goal would be that we would replace every tree, every public tree that we remove.
And that would then.
And currently, we're not doing that.
Right, I agree, and I would like to see that.
The plan, not a policy.
Correct.
So we would have to adopt the policy.
A separate policy.
This is just guiding the staff.
Okay.
Resources and policy changes.
And then the other, the other question I had was, if I'm understanding what you're saying, by adopting this plan, it sets a goal for our city so that you already have one grant that's already been announced that we will get, but it will allow us to continue to look for other grants to continue to work in other parts of the city as well.
I believe it'd be a critical tool that we would be able to show to help bolster our success at obtaining grants.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Councilmember Keen. Yeah, a couple of things here. I guess I have, I I do appreciate this as a plan. I appreciate kind of the response to the feedback on the the staffing levels and how to do this, and I appreciate that you're going out trying to find these other things. But but I guess I don't agree with this notion that we're we're doing a urban forest master plan, but we're only funding a three percent of the city. We have a team of foresters already that they're going to be working under this plan. So it's not just the one grant we got, and there's other grants we could get. But I, again, it's, we're not just doing this in the one place we're getting the funding. This is going to guide our work in everywhere, but it's also funded by the fact that we have a forestry department in our park and rec team. And that's, this is going to guide their work. This is not a policy on tree replacement. It's not a, like a preservation ordinance. It is a, like a, like an aspirational plan going forward.
Correct, and to be clear about those grants, that was framed, either we could apply for the money to be used in those areas or not.
Yeah.
So it wasn't us deciding that we were going to use that money in these specific areas. That was an underlying.
I commend you guys for being opportunistic and trying to find ways to to fund the work we want to do.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. What percentage of the budget is currently being used to hire additional contractors to do the necessary pruning?
So we, we have contractual money budgeted each year. I don't have those numbers at the top of my head, but, you know, for the most part, what we contract out are removals and stump grinding. We've always tried to retain pruning internally so that we have, you know, our staff is highly trained, and they're all certified arborists, and that's where I've always preferred to have our employees do that critical work. So we tend to contract removals and stump grinding. We have not contracted a lot of pruning. We have, in certain instances, to help with raising canopies in certain areas of town. We've set up structural pruning contracts in the past, again, to companies that employ ISA certified arborists.
Thank you, and then to speak to one of Mr. Palmer's questions. I'm going to misuse the word ordinance. That's not it. But it comes across us all the time when we approve tree pruning companies. Our one rule is you cannot top a tree. The one fee that we have assessed someone was because they topped a tree. They violated our city rules and the tree died. Is that correct?
We ask that question so that they are aware that that is a bad practice, and it still happens.
It sure does.
On private property. But that's very difficult for us to control.
Right.
We don't know if it's licensed tree care companies or not.
Right, unfortunately. So you spoke at the beginning of your presentation about some of the ecosystem benefits that trees have. You you listed many of them, but with some of the new MS four permitting that's coming our way and the stormwater management that we're going to be dealing with as as our rains are more spread apart, and when they come, we have more rain coming at a time, and the absorption rate of a tree with stormwater is so great. Have you been able to maybe assume or calculate at this rate of maybe losing a percent of canopy per year, how much extra we're going to be paying in stormwater management, stormwater fees, and the additional negative externalities of perhaps our water becoming even more polluted?
No, I don't get involved with the MS four permitting, but I I would have to defer to Public Works who oversee that. There may be impacts. I can't answer that question right now.
Do you have any idea, Ms. Turing, about about that? The capacity, water holding capacity of trees and absorption of rain to mitigate stormwater issues? And as we go forward with trying to work with some of the new state guidelines that are coming our way, how important the tree canopy is to increase?
Right, I I don't know the numbers. I know that it's a, it's something that they, you know, with some of the new MS four requirements that they say we should be looking at, or it's an alternative, right, to look at ways to manage, try to do some management of stormwater, but I don't know the exact numbers.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. And then I guess my last question, and it had to do with a comment that Mr. Palmer and also Mr. Keen made. You know, we've got climate migration going of of certain genera and species of trees, and do we, do we think that within this plan, it might be possible or conceived that we can work on, that we can work on minimizing or getting rid of first those invasive or likely invasive trees and then replace them with those suggested DNR trees that are are going to be more viable as, you know, the new USDA USDA plan, Hardiness Storm Map just came out.
I would say we're already doing that.
Awesome. That's great. That's good to know.
We're minimizing planting species that have invasive tendencies like Japanese tree lilac, which we've removed from our approved Boulevard Tree List. We are looking at zones further south here and experimenting and having good luck with trees that traditionally are not zoned for this particular area. Like black gum, persimmon, then there's several other types.
Right, awesome. Okay, thank you. That's all of my questions for now, I guess.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Just to kind of clarify to, I'm going through this. So if there are trees on their property, they is it how big the tree is? If if it's like a, like these volunteer trees that pop up everywhere, a lot in my neighborhood, like we have giant ash trees that have sprouted, and and every year, there's tons of trees. And I know you can't have, you know, thirty trees on the, what is, is there regulations on cutting small trees down? I mean, I just, is there any kind of regulations on what trees are protected? Is there a certain size of tree?
Currently, we have no regulation on tree removal on private property.
Okay, okay, just to, okay.
No, that was a recommendation that the city contemplated that in an effort to save canopy cover, but we don't have an ordinance to that effect now.
I I kind of wish there was. I know there's a lot of trees that are needlessly taken down for many reasons. But one of the things I've been talking to a lot of people who analyze deaths of trees is because of malpractice, because people aren't certified. I just was curious why in this plan wasn't there a requirement or, you know, to issue a license per se to say you have to go with an ISA certified arborist to obtain a license?
So traditionally, the city has not required that. We do require that of contractors that we hire, but typically, what our licensure does is it allows us to verify that they have the appropriate insurance. That's the main reason, as I see it, for our licensing requirement.
Has it been looked at to include that in? Because if we're, we're making this amazing policy, I mean, the city, the forestry department's making this a wonderful lifesaving, future saving policy, to have that as a requirement because it would protect trees from damage and loss? Is that something that had been considered?
It it would help. We have not done that so far. We do make recommendations to people who ask, you know, who they should hire to do tree work, and we, we don't recommend specific companies, but we say any of those on our list that are, have ISA certified arborists on staff would be the ones that we would start with, but there is no requirement right now.
Thank you.
Did we get to a motion yet?
No. I would suggest Councilmember Kirkpatrick make a motion.
We don't need a motion. Just a presentation.
Well, they're, they are asking.
There's a request for council action.
Do you want to make the motion, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, or?
Yeah, I'd have to get out of my DNR tree migration window that I have open here with the new species they're suggesting.
The motion is to.
I got it.
Okay, it's not.
I got it. The action requested is adopting the Urban Forest Master Plan, so I am very thankful that you have all worked so hard to bring this forward. So therefore, I move that we accept the Urban Forest Master Plan and adopt it for the city of Rochester.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
This is awesome. This is really wonderful. It's a great first step. I know we're going to be able to do a lot more, and I appreciate all your efforts and just involve the community like we have. I enjoyed going down East Center Street on the north side and pruning all of the boulevard trees that needed it after we planted them this spring. I wasn't going to tell you, but I did it anyway because they needed it. So, yours, hey, thank you. This is great. Good first step, and I'm looking forward to this growing into something that's really going to mitigate so many of the challenges we have with overdevelopment, impervious surfaces, sediment and erosion. Just, I can go on and on, so thank you.
All right, other discussion? Councilmember Dennis?
Yes, so I would like to make an amendment to the motion. I sent the amendment to Mr. Whitman and Ms. Elms and Ms. Giesler, so I don't know if they're possible to throw it up there, but I would like to amend the motion so that no license shall be issued nor continued in effect unless the licensed maintains, I mean, the licenses, license, mean licensee maintains the I. nor continued in effect unless the licensed maintains, the license, license, licensee maintains the I C I F A certified arborist credential in good standing.
I don't have that. It was texted to me and I have no way of putting a text on. That's why we have email.
Yeah. Is this germane to the original motion, Clerk Giesler? It's it's a very specific policy language.
I would defer to City Attorney Spindler Craig on that.
So, that language is not anywhere in the master plan?
No, it's a plan. It's not a specific policy document.
Mr. Spindler Craig?
Madam President, Councilmembers, Mayor, I haven't seen the the proposed change. I'm not sure if it's contemplated as an aspirational addition to this document as opposed to.
It's too specific.
In theory.
Uh, Mr. Whitman?
Ordinance or an actual requirement of how business is done.
It's basically asking to amend your code of ordinances.
Which would not be.
Germane to the adoption of the plan. Mr. Whitman, do you concur?
I was just going to point out there are several parts of the plan that point to development of policy. And so, I think, in my opinion, that I'm just speaking for the context of the plan. It gets ahead of us a little bit.
All right, so I'm going to rule that motion not germane, but we're back to the original motion and that's certainly something you could explore as a future conversations and future policy changes, but this is still the adoption of the plan that will help guide policy.
So, I'll just not make a motion, but I'll say that I believe that is a really important thing to, if we're going to do this right, to make sure that trees are protected. I added some more. I can't necessarily talk to staff that's not department head, but hopefully department heads can send that to others, what I've texted. And I can email that to, you know, in the future. But I feel to make sure that we protect trees is that we prune them and maintain them and make sure that we don't damage and destroy through negligence. And but this plan is just a wonderful, it's amazing, and I just want to commend the staff for the Forestry Department and Parks Department to for going through and even finding funding and making sure that trees are protected. Because in the future, we're going to have areas that we can't even live because of the heat. I just, I have no words other than appreciation for all the work that's been put into this. Thank you.
Councilmember Dennis, other discussion? Councilmember Keen?
Yeah, I'm going to support the motion tonight. I can, I watched this go from the original thing where it was, I thought that was out of step with what the what this council was willing to invest in a in an urban forest master plan. And I I think the staff was, had heard that and came back with like aspirational goals, but also plans for how to fund them. And I think I think we're in a better place as far as understanding that we we want to be at these better places. But we think we're investing in them at a certain level right now and we're not willing to double and things like that on it. So, I want to support it and I think the communication has happened so that these are aspirational and they're not things that are going to be like, we've committed to this, therefore, we need to come up with the seven arborist in 2025. I I hope we're not in that sort of miscommunication. I don't think we are.
Thank you for those comments. This is really exciting. I'm very supportive of the plan. And I also said to Administrator Zom, so what what exactly is the ask? And the ask is really, as Councilmember Keen said, approving this document that will guide the future work, knowing very well that if there are policy changes, that that would be in cooperation with the city council to make happen. And and I just am really excited about the emphasis on training and this volunteer pruning and just thinking through these innovative approaches that hopefully down the road could offset some of the budget requests for additional staff. So, just hope you'll continue thinking creatively and thanks for all the work your team does. Ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six one. Thank you for staying late. All right, so we are going back to item H one, which is the 2024 Council Calendar and Updates to the Council Rules of Procedure and Code of Conduct. Administrator Zoms, go ahead.
President Carlson, I foresee this is going to be a long issue. Could we take a break prior to starting this?
Yes, is five minutes sufficient?
I just think we should have a break.
Okay, five minutes, eleven twenty.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
So as we left off on the council rules and code of conduct, I will turn it over to Administrator Elms now for real for the third time to introduce the topics.
Thank you, Council President, Council members, Mayor Norton, members of the public who are holding out. I did just want to point out that you had quite substantive discussion on November 13th about this, which was informed by discussion on March 13th and different feedback since that have happened sometimes in public meetings, sometimes other. So the key things that are outlined in the RCA and related documents are in response to that feedback from November 13th, making sure that we are consistent across the document about moving to a 6:00 PM start time in relationship to the business meeting, revising the time limit for each speaker. We'd heard two or three, and what is in your packet today is two, although that's up to the city council. That would bring you into alignment with what the county board does in this room. And then adding some clarifying language to Appendix A for public participation and open comment period that states participants are further encouraged to limit comments generally to topics that are within the scope and jurisdiction of the council's ability to affect policy. So it also goes on to indicate some things that were not recommended based on what we heard from about two hours of council discussion on just November 13th, a week ago. And with that, I would turn it over to the city council for any additional questions that might exist or whatever your pleasure is.
All right, thank you, Administrator Elms. Let's go ahead and start with questions, and then I entertain a motion, and I entertain perhaps splitting, right, request that we split the two, so are able to consider the calendar separate from the rules. We can do whatever we want.
I'd make a motion to accept the calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, Councilmember Palmer?
I think we've had enough discussion.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right.
Aye.
I was drinking my water. I'm sorry. That's okay.
And I'm going to move to adopt the revised council rules and procedures and code of conduct as presented. Second.
All right, Councilmember Keane?
Yeah, I think as City Administrator Elms mentioned, we spent a lot of time on this earlier this month, but we spent a lot of time too on this back in, in March, trying to kind of come together as a new council and do this. And I think those things are generally reflected in here, along with other things that have to be reflected in here, like changes in state law or other sort of things we need to react to. Anytime you try, you try to edit a document down that are seven people are the authors, and there's other inputs, you're always going to have things that you could want to have done a little differently. But I feel like this is a good guiding document for both the real rules, but also the kind of the guiding document says this is how we should behave with each other, with the peers, with public. And again, I want to, I want to stand by the work that was done to get us to that point.
Thank you, Councilmember Keane.
So we're going to have questions, just point of order, we're going to have questions now?
Yeah.
You can ask questions of staff, yes. Are you ready?
Oh yeah, yeah. All right. So just to refresh memory that we did not have adequate time, that it was cut off because the council study session was very much overbooked, I believe. We had, we've had study sessions that were 20 minutes, and we had, that one went over. So I had a lot of un, unmet time, I had a lot of questions and thoughts on this as well. But I've gone through other council code of ethics in other cities, and they have, like, for, I'll just, for example, just point out that the city of Bloomington has an entire section on protocol for centuring, and there is not in our code of ethics, which perhaps could have saved a lot of stress if that was the case. So I just wanted to know, the city staff are the ones proposing these. There wasn't, I was asked if there was like surveys or anything that led up to this. There wasn't. I just, gosh, I just have, I have so many, it's hard to start, where to start. I, okay. I'm going to just, just kind of go down the thing line, the start time for, it's always been for the last 25, 30 years at 7:00. I've talked to many residents since we've had our study session. Hands down, even today, we've heard that 7:00 is a good time for many people because you don't just show up at 7:00. You show up at 6:30, 6:15, you have traffic, like today on 52, there was an accident. You have, you know, to have time to get supper, these long meetings right now is going to go well past midnight, I'm sure. And having moments to have self-care, to have basic food, we, none of us eat here up on council, so I feel that there is a, no reason to change it to 6:00, which would force residents to have to come incredibly early. And, and I mean, I think it's been done to help staff. So my question is, I hear a lot of things about how it benefits city staff. How has it been analyzed benefiting the residents, this change to 6:00?
Councilmember Dennis? All of this was asked on November 13th. I'll repeat what I had shared, which is that all of this came forward from conversations with city council members that had public comments and publicly displayed concerns that multiple council members have had, including yourself, about how packed the agendas are. You just mentioned that today. And so I think it's really important that when I'm hearing from multiple different council members that they want to try something different, that's how this came forward in a council code of conduct and rules of procedure that would reflect that. Everything that's in here beyond that is also reflective of conversations, public conversations that the city council, sitting at this dais and other locations, have had, both on March 13th and prior to that, in the prior year in 2022, as well as state law changes that suggest that. And so part of the concerns I've heard about residents is if we're going so late into the night, it's difficult for them to stay late. So it sounds like for some folks, there won't be a resolution for anything being acceptable. And there are lots of different types of people. One of the other things that we talked about is many different people in the city of Rochester are not on traditional nine to five shifts. And so one of the other ways that's happened is that we have multiple ways that people can reach the city council, whether that is written, public comment, calling in on Zoom, on Zoom, excuse me, or being able to reach out to their council members or the entire council directly through email and other means.
I just, I, I feel it's not about the councils, about the residents, but the other concern.
I can say something about residents, and I said it two weeks ago, that, or last week, whenever it was, that my experience of leading a congregation of 4,300 people is that earlier is better. So those are residents, most of them of Rochester.
I honor your experience. I know from my personal experience, 7:00 has always been a time where you can leave and have supper and have a family and get somewhere. I've spent many, many nights volunteering, and, and 7:00 has always been good for me or in the people that I've worked with. So I wanted to bring up the, I'm kind of jumping around here, but the two-minute timeframe that I've had emails after this was discussed, thanking, thanking me for talking about having some time to, to compose themselves so that people can speak. Not everyone's a public speaker. That gentleman who was the very first speaker, I, I mean, I can't fathom cutting him off after two minutes. I feel like four minutes is, I mean, basic to allow people to explain complex issues, to have a voice, and that's my opinion is why we're here, is to listen to people's voices and be there so they're heard and they can have their issues addressed. And to cut residents' time is probably the last thing we should be doing as a council. So I, that's my thoughts on that. But was there any research done, any modeling for the two minutes, or was it just to save time for a council member and staff?
Councilmember Dennis, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, the, what I recall of the discussion on just last week on November 13th was that the city council looked at two or three minutes, and what is reflected here, as just mentioned earlier, is that that would bring this into alignment with our friends at Olmsted County, who also have their board meetings in this room, who have a public comment period of two minutes. There was also discussion from the city council that indicated that if, in any number of instances, if the council felt like they were interested in suspending the rules, which you've done before, you could have suspended the rules to allow either an individual or others to speak longer if they had challenges speaking. There also, I thought, was a wonderful display of residents today who, without any changes, sort of referenced some of the conversation and found different ways in order to be able to shorten their comments. So for example, if you had a group of folks come up with eight people who were indicating they didn't want to all speak separately, but one person was speaking, then that was less than four minutes still, but representing eight people. And so I think I've saw residents able to even reflect that this evening during open comment. So I was quite impressed with what they were able to accomplish today.
Just a question, does, I guess I won't see this, is the mayor included in this, you know, city council code of conduct? Because we see that the mayor has a lot of opportunities to speak, in part sitting on the dais, just curious on, does this include her position as well?
Councilmember Dennis, Mayor Norton, members of the council, there are a number of different sections of the council rules, procedure, and code of conduct that do reference the mayor. Many of the different rules of procedure reference the mayor, and for example, within the document, it identifies the order of the agenda, and part of the order of the agenda includes the mayor's report, which is at the beginning and generally quite short. It also references when there is an acting mayor and talks about the council president in that capacity. It also references the mayor relative to travel, as well as in a section relative to placing items on the agenda under council-initiated action. So there's a number of different places throughout the document currently and, and prior, as well as seating on the dais, that reference the mayor's position, and that has been true for, throughout time that you've had a council rules of procedure and code of conduct.
And then another question about communication, because I think communication is an issue that we've been having. We've had a consultant paid good money to help us with knowing different communications. And I heard just today that, that when I texted, because texting is very efficient for me, instead of trying to figure out how to put it into emails and cut and paste, but there's been many times where I have received texts from staff who will refuse to get correspondence that way. And I like it because it's not destroyed after six months, so it can be brought up. But there isn't a formal way of communication. So under, without a formal way of communication, texting should be acceptable. I, I know that Mr. Deputy City Administrator Parrish gave a list just a couple weeks ago or about everyone's emails. I know there is a council member who advertises a personal email versus a .gov email. I just want to know why a formal, a formal form of correspondence is not mentioned in the code of ethics or code of conduct? Has that been discussed?
I don't believe that that's been discussed, but it has been, the question has been asked tens of, tens of times. And so it isn't, texting isn't actually a formal mode of communication. It's generally used for transitory communication. I'm going to be late for the meeting. I'm not going to be able to appear today. Are you going to be able to assist me with this? Not formal communication. It's not something that's integrated within our system, so I can't receive a text and then pop it up on a screen. I have to, I can't forward a text to an email easily. I don't know they're happening in the middle of a meeting. So really depends on the type of communication and also the content of that communication. So, and I would just point out that, I'll just speak for myself, I don't typically respond to lengthy policy-related texts. I respond via email because that is the document retention system that's the most timely and efficient to be able to, to hold. And transitory communication from the Minnesota data practices isn't required to be held even for the six months that we hold it. So I prefer not to take the onus on myself to create those kinds of documents. You can choose to do that. And for example, for my preference, I would choose to respond to any lengthy policy item by email.
Point of order, we have a motion and a second. We've over eight minutes now, can we?
Yeah, I was giving a little leniency.
Can we call a question?
We have question, we have question time to ask questions of staff.
Eight minutes.
Have your eight minutes of done.
You have been speaking for about eight minutes.
Well, that doesn't go to your, that doesn't go to eight minutes. You can have unlimited questions.
Does count for the eight minutes.
It does.
It's part of your rules of procedure.
Did you say it does or doesn't?
It does.
Yeah. Yeah, so I was tracking when you would start, when Ms. Elms would talk.
This is all stuff that was cut off by the council that I didn't get to.
Actually, a number of these things actually were discussed on November 13th.
Well, I'm, I'm going through, there's a lot of.
There's a point of order. Are we done or not?
Ms. Dennis, the point of order has been called, and you are, I was giving you a little leniency because you didn't ask questions ahead of the motion, and we did call for questions. So if you can provide a final thought in about two minutes, I'll allow that.
Well, I have immense amount of information that's not included, I think should be included for transparency and accountability and making sure that we are doing our jobs.
Point of order, so her, her answer to you is no, she can't, so let's move on.
Okay, that was not my answer. Please don't speak for me. That's another issue with ethics is people assuming intent and speaking for each other. I, I think should not be accepted.
All right, we're going to move on. You are now attacking your colleagues. We're not going to do that.
Well, I just don't like to have people.
Discussion or, or Councilmember Kirkpatrick, I know you had some thoughts.
Yes, I, there's a particular part of the code of conduct that I would like to go over specifically, and I'm wondering if it could be brought up on the, on the board by, so that everyone can see. It would be Rule Three remarks and debate. I was hoping we could all look at that carefully and then read that. Did I read each one out loud? Do we want to take turns or?
Do you want to give us a second?
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick, apologies.
No problem, no problem.
Could you repeat the section, please?
It was emailed to you earlier today.
Yes, it was the email that was sent earlier, Rule Three remarks and debate, Article One, the beginning of our code of conduct.
Page six, right there. All right, so scroll up to where it starts with interruption.
Well, could we see the full title, Rule Three remarks and debate, excuse me for interrupting and not asking for permission? So these, I think, are very, are crucial to the way we interact with each other, the work we do as a council, and how we follow through on supporting each other and supporting the staff. Speaking to the motion, interruption, courtesy, discipline, challenge, and then city staff. So a couple of pieces that I want to highlight are B, interruption, no member of the council shall interrupt or argue with any other members while such member has the floor. C, courtesy, I know you can all read this, but I'm just going to say this out loud so we can hear it as well. Courtesy, members of the council shall be courteous in their language and demeanor in the discussion, comments or debate of any matter, and shall not engage in disorderly behavior, make personal comments, derogatory remarks, or insinuations in respect to any other member of the city council, staff, or public. D, discipline, if a member of the council violates these rules, the presiding officer shall call such member to order, in which case such member shall be silent, except to explain or continue in order. Any other member of the council may, under a point of order, call the presiding officer or other member to order. Additional discipline may include, but is not limited to, a verbal admonition, public reprimand, and expulsion from the meeting at which the conduct is occurring. E, challenge, any member of the council shall have the right to challenge any action in ruling of the presiding officer or member, in which case the decision of the majority of the members of the council present, including the presiding officer, shall govern. I think these key pieces are very important to this council and future councils going forward, and I might suggest that we all perhaps just make a brief comment that we acknowledge that this is the way we want to move forward, and this is a key component of our code of conduct, and that we, in the future, will be giving special attention to this to keep our meetings in order and moving most efficiently for the public that we represent.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, appreciate you. This is obviously in our council rules, we've agreed to it, but I just want to say to my colleagues that this really takes all of us to manage, that I will do my best, but really rely on you to be hearing those opportunities where we do need to speak up, where there is a point of order, where something is not germane, and that we need to together be holding each other accountable. And I will say that I will be using the tools available to us in the discipline section because I am very concerned with how things have gone on this council, and I've sort of had enough. So we are agreeing to this, hopefully tonight, it takes five of us, but just wanted to take a few minutes and call that out, and it is in there, and we are agreeing to it, and I am asking all of you to support me in that and support one another. Are there, okay, Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Can we move on to some other things, or do we want to just briefly acknowledge that piece, or will that just be incorporated into the vote?
Approval.
Okay, awesome.
Affirm vote, you have affirmed that section.
Got it, awesome. So then may I?
The floor, yeah.
Okay, excellent, thank you. I just want to say that I, I really would choose to amend the motion so that we have a three-minute timeframe for, for public speaking. I, I just think it's too short, too fast. I, I represent the public, I like to hear from the public. I know we can always second to, or make a motion to suspend the rules, but, and, and I, and I hear you, alignment with the other elected groups is, is smart. It's good, but for some reason, I just can't stomach two minutes. I don't know why it is. Maybe next year I'll be able to. I have no idea. Of course, I'd have to be elected for that to happen, but you know. So I just, I just wanted to say that I would like to make a motion to amend that we use the three minutes for open comment versus the two minutes.
For a second?
A second.
All right, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, any other thoughts on that?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, other discussion, Councilmember Keane?
I just want to ask staff if, again, I, I think we did, if we pointed out it was a two to three minute, is there any serious concern from staff level?
Councilmember Keane, councilmembers, Mayor Norton, I would say, I wouldn't necessarily label it a concern. I do think that one thing that the two minutes does provide is it gets to some of the comments that are not germane to the city council, that are, sometimes start, they wiggle in and out of being germane to the city council, and so that may be one of the most ideal ways for you also to address the germaneness concern that we spent a lot of time on, on November 13th, in a way that has just less non-german comments by folks who maybe regularly appear, utilize the whole four minutes, and much of that isn't germane to council. So that was another one of the thoughts about that from a staff perspective, was that since, I, I do believe, as much as we would love to make that happen, it's difficult because not every public comment, that it doesn't always stay non-germane. It wiggles in and out of germaneness to the city council.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer?
I like the two minutes for a couple of reasons. One of them, it gives an opportunity for more people to speak. I think the last meeting that we had, that we went to four, that we said, well, we'll do two, and that's, that's not good for people. So if they have two minutes, if they want to come to us and say, you know, I really need four before I start, we can always say, you know, suspend our rules and do that. So I think two minutes keeps it exact, and, and I think that it also helps out getting more people to be able to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Wall?
We have an excellent journalist in the room who would tell us that you'd better get the good stuff in, in the first paragraph or two paragraphs, because they're not going to read very, very much past that. So you ought to be able to organize your thoughts, so the important things that you say in the first two minutes, then you can lop it off from the bottom. Is that right, Randy? He won't speak to his editors.
Writing an article.
Councilmember Bransford?
Well, I think Mr. Wall, Mr. Palmer hit it on the head. It's, for me, again, it's a little dismaying to hear that somehow we're trying to cut people off, or not give people enough time, or this, that, and the other thing. And I think if we do recognize there's a speaker that is struggling, I'm more than happy to, to give more time. I mean, we're not heartless in that respect. I know we all have a great deal of understanding how difficult it is to stand and speak. It's, it's a tough thing to do, and if we recognize someone's struggling, I'm more than happy to extend it. My primary goal is to allow for more speakers, and this, this notion that when people wiggle in and out and they take four minutes, if, if it's nice, crisp, and to the point, we're actually allowing more people to speak publicly and to present their positions. So for, for me, it's actually a benefit to the public to be able to say, look, keep it crisp, keep it to the point, now we have twice as many people that can come and talk. So I support the two minutes.
So Councilmember Dennis, your time is up.
This is an entire different moment.
Please stop talking.
Point of order, my time was asking questions.
Let's start a five-minute recess, thank you. Let's start a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
They had a change of heart. The project was moving forward. We're ready to start design on the bridge project portion of it. We kept that segment out right now. We're ready to commence design on that portion of it. They approached us, the attorney for the neighborhood, said we no longer represent the Huang family. So the Huangs contacted me, we had started having conversations. The attorney, Mr. McIntosh, worked with our city attorney and Mr. Widman to have a negotiated conversation that way about the property. And we both came together, both property owners and the city came together where we're going to pay them a price for the property. It is slightly above what the county assessed value is, which is not surprising, and paying for a fence along their property. The third stipulation on the Galaria property was to provide lighting. I presume that came from the neighborhood saying they want to have lighting back there for whatever reason they wanted to have. Most of our River Trail quarter lighting is, or Triborough River Trail quarter is lit, not all of it, but a good share of it. We would light it probably fairly similar to that. We've now laid that out. That's a more recent conversation. So the idea is to buy the two properties voluntarily, provide payment for them for the fencing along those two properties, and provide lighting in the back lawn that trail quarter. That's the the process going forward. Both owners have signed the documents. We're ready to cut checks to them. They know that checks are coming forward shortly, assuming you make that approval tonight. It's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. I had also believe I had asked about that. I'm recalling the property comes out sort of in an eastward fashion with the power lines. Has there been a discussion about backing that power line up then to keep it in a straight line? Or is that tele, is that light pole staying in that eastward section? What's happening with those power lines?
Current power line, there's several segments of the power line. Not quite every lot, but in these two properties, there's one of the southerly lot by the Huang family and in the middle of the lot on the Galaria family. The Galaria family property, that power poles plan to be moved easterly towards the corner of their property, towards the river, to allow a bigger space for the trail to fit in there. And again, that brings the power line almost off of their property and off the Huang property. So again, they both win from that standpoint as well. The power line goes away from their property as far as possible. It leaves a space in there adequate for the trail to fit in that location.
Got it. And then has the type of lighting? I'm assuming, could be wrong, but I'm assuming that lighting can come off of either of those, I'm calling them telephone poles, but they're not, those wooden posts. Can lighting come off of those posts and can specific lighting be chosen so that there is a baffle or a light deflector that keeps it away from shining in their properties at night?
So part of the agreement was that we'd have downward facing lighting. So again, if you look at our trail lighting right now, it's full cutoff pointed downward on our trails. That's what we're kind of putting in there, probably very similar to that. Using the poles is a question we don't have an answer to yet. Again, this just came up fairly recently. RP is looking at that wood pole or those wood poles, see what's supportable on those for those lights. They'll give us an answer back. If not, we'll put new poles in with new lights instead of just hanging the lights on the current poles.
So there would be additional poles?
Yeah, probably more like our standard trail lighting poles rather than power poles. And again, the power poles that are currently out there are mostly along the property line currently. Most of the trail is not near those property lines. So again, if we put the lights on those property line locations, that may actually put more light into those neighbors' houses that we don't want to have.
Right, that'd be bad.
It would not be welcome. So again, we want to make sure we minimize that impact on the owners.
Awesome. And then was there a landscape allowance given to them as well? Or is that landscape allowance something that's sort of inclusive of the purchase price?
We gave the, in the Huang conversation that I had with them, we gave them a choice of landscaping or fence. And basically whichever one was more expensive, yeah, the fence turned out to be more expensive.
And that was included in the purchase price or that was an additional add-on to help?
Inclusive.
Okay, alright.
So there's a price for the land plus the fence. We just rolled it together in that, in that cost.
Okay, got it. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Palmer, I'm supposed to allow everybody else to speak before we go back.
I just want to clarify Mr. Keen's acquisition that, that I'm trying to delay this, but if I wanted to delay it, I would have said motion to deny. I didn't do that. What I'm getting at is, is on Wednesday, when our packet comes out, we should have all the information. This is not a time sensitive issue. The trail's not going to go away. It's not going to delay the trail at all. All it is, is, is the staff should get to us on the information on Wednesday so we can vote on it. Showing up on Monday afternoon with some more information doesn't allow you to have the time to read it or research it. And, and to be factual with this, I have no idea if the owners like it or not. I assume that this is going to pass six one. I'm just asking for it to be delayed for till the next meeting. That's all I'm asking for.
We regularly have things added at the last minute.
We should not be able to do that. And, and there's certain times that it's important, but this is not a time sensitive issue.
Madam President.
Passion, yes.
If I could just address the timing, there were a number of things in play last week. It was really the Galaria agreement that, that came in late, as you saw, and there was a specific reason for that. I'm not speaking to the motion, of course, but just explaining the timing last week. That party was represented, of course, which is typically important to us. We have some assurance that they're represented by competent counsel and they know what they're doing. We ended up with this signed agreement. And part of the delay in part was to get through the Wednesday meeting with the ethical practices board because we were dealing with some remaining complaints that had to do with the Southwest Trail. That delay was at the request of Attorney McIntosh. They wanted to see what developed there. So we get through the meeting on Wednesday. And then they had some additional requests related to the agreement that led to Friday. Friday afternoon, they had some additional requests that took us to Monday morning before they were ready to sign it. They signed it again with competent counsel. We have every reason to think that they're satisfied with the agreement. They've signed it. We largely honored their requests. And I would otherwise just speak a little bit to the efforts of the park staff. My memory of some of this discussion and the direction from council was to do, do our best to work with those landowners, those homeowners, to see if this trail can work at grade. Some of the conversation, including some of the allegations that came through the ethical practices board were suggestions that staff had somehow not treated these homeowners in, in the correct way or respectfully, or somehow were looking to take advantage of them. Those ethics complaints were dismissed by the ethics board. And I just mentioned that in part to make the point that I think staff bent over backwards to try to accommodate their concerns, reach agreements that those folks felt comfortable with. That does explain the reason that we ended up with this agreement today. Always, of course, looking to get things to you as quickly as possible, but that's the explanation.
Thanks, Ms. Alson. Then Councilmember Kirkpatrick.
And I just did want to point out, as I have in the past, that this actually did get to your radars at eleven eleven this morning when I sent out the update that included the pulled item from that moment, indicating that the Glari easement is, in the packet, is not the most updated version and providing you four bullet points of what would, we would expect to be updated and sent to you as well as the likelihood that it would be coming to you signed by the property owners who had requested those changes.
Can we vote on the motion to continue or are you?
Yeah, yeah, just a final comment. I, I do, I do appreciate wanting to continue this to December fourth, and I think we should do that. I met with these folks, I think, three, potentially four times last summer to talk about this and just, just work through some of the details. Just because of the knowledge I have of landscaping, et cetera, and that kind of thing. And the, the cultural barriers, I, I think were significant. So I appreciate hearing from you, Mr. Spindler Craig, about the, those ethical concerns and honoring, honoring their culture and perhaps what they felt. And I'm glad to hear they've come around because I think this is the best thing for the city. I, I feel badly that they felt bad, but just to honor the timing of this and just to see if they want to reach out to us to chime in. We probably won't have much to talk about on December fourth and we can pass it quickly, but I want to go ahead and support that motion.
Madam President, just briefly, can I, can I make clear that Galaria is represented by council? So I just want to make sure that we understand that none of you can be reaching out to Galaria to talk through the agreement or consider their asks. So just want to, want to point that out.
Right, Councilmember Keen?
So I'll, I'll just reiterate my thing here. This is something, this was, this was city business at a, at a policy level, we made a hard decision to put this trail in. And since then, it was the thing about like, no, let's move it out of park control into city council control or the other way around. Now this one feels the same way. It's like these, the, the park and the legal department's working with these people there. We have enough information in front of us. We'll always find something that's not totally done. I, I don't, I'm not worried about like the two weeks is this big thing, but at the same time, I don't want to be manipulated into just extending things so that something else can come up. I, I would, I think our normal thing is to suspend, to dispense with our business when it comes in front of us, and that's what I hope we can do tonight.
Alright, let's, Councilmember Dennis.
Okay, thank you. So I have to, well, I do not agree with this motion. Like, I feel like that it has been discussed. But I also, out of principle, do not believe that we should limit polling of items. And if Councilmember Palmer feels it needs to be polled, he has every right to do so. I also disagree with people giving information the last minute. I know there's been emails that I have rushed back. Study session went long. And you rush back to do all the things you need to do, grab some supper, come back, and you're trying to read emails because there's new information that the, the residents have not been able to get. So transparency is very important. That's my passion is to make sure transparency. We are an oversight board as a council. That's one of our roles to have accountability. And so I feel that we need to allow residents to have that information, to have enough time to thoroughly digest the information that we receive. And I do not believe it is appropriate for council members to limit other council members from pulling items off a consent agenda that I believe is already overly packed. Thank you.
If I could just make a point, the two impacted residents who are agreeing to this, the property owners that would be and have already signed the easements are the two property owners that have any germane. Other property owners cannot interfere with their ability to execute these easements. So whether they had the original draft or the final draft with very minor changes, very minor changes, those were requested by the property owner, the only party that can enter into the easement agreement.
Councilmember Bransford.
Well, I, I supported continuing it primarily just to hear the discussion and out of equal concern about something showing up late. I guess the thing that's really rattling around in my head is if, if these proper, property owners truly did want to just go ahead and do this and, and are expecting this to go through. This is, this has been a very hot button topic. And if the owners have settled, I, I, you know, I don't know. I, I don't want to add injury to insult and say, well, you know, now we're not going to allow you to fulfill a, a contract that you've signed and, and want to go forward. So yeah, this is, this is.
I just want to reiterate, Councilmember, that was appreciated. Thank you. I had that point too, but Councilmember Keen too. We set the policy. This is just like an administrative function. We ask staff to carry forward and it's done now. So I am not willing to continue it. Let's just get it done. Let's vote on the motion to continue. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion fails. Is there an alternate motion or a different motion?
I'll move to authorize the acquisition and settlement agreements with the required area for trail improvements through Soldier's Field for the two adjoining properties.
Second.
Alright, Councilmember Keen.
I, again, I, I do feel this is, like you say, more administrative. It's not setting a policy, but it is in support of work going on with the staff and it is dispensing with the work that's in front of us. There was no specific thing we were looking for in the next two weeks that took two weeks. So I would like to see us dispense with this tonight.
Councilmember Palmer?
The point I was trying to make, and I'll make it again, is, is I will not vote for anything anymore from, that is added to our agenda. If it's not out in public on Wednesday and if you can't get the staff to get it together, fine, I'm not voting for it. So, and I'll be true to that until three more years. So.
Favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Alright, motion carries five two. Okay, F seventeen, which is now H five, ordinance amendment establishing the parking and transit services department. Go ahead, Councilmember Dennis, and we have Cindy on deck for this one, Ms. Steinholtzer.
Yeah, I, I pulled this because I have talked, I pulled this item because I have talked to city staff who have come up to me and upset with the dynamics of having so much more management. And I, I guess I'm just questioning if this is, is needed. If this, if, if it wasn't going to occur, if this would have saved money. And I'm pulling this up because it got shuffled in with my other papers, so I apologize. I'm my ADA accommodations have I'm allowed to have information presented in a different way, which I think is an important thing for a DEI city to support people's communication and ability, abilities for processing information. So I apologize, but I, I'll pull this up.
Madam President.
A little bit different.
Might have the floor for a moment.
Yes, Mr. Spindler Craig.
Just want to clarify once again. All accommodations appropriate have been given to Councilmember Dennis and any suggestion otherwise is inaccurate. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, Councilmember Dennis.
I have one more, just when we're going through this now, is there a motion yet or do we need a motion?
Well, I have to get my, I have to go through and find my paper. So just if you give me a second.
Then can I make the motion?
Find it.
Yeah. You can make a motion, Councilmember Keen, and then Member Dennis will still have her about seven minutes left.
I'm going to make a two-part motion to approve the proposed ordinance amending the parking and transit services department as outlined in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five recommended operating budget and direct the city attorney's office to prepare an ordinance for first reading on December eleventh.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Keen, you have the floor.
I have nothing more. I want to turn, I'll turn time back over to Councilmember Dennis.
Well, I'm I pulling this up here. I disagree with the city attorney on that issue. He just mentioned. I, I just, I don't, I can't let misinformation fly, so I had to just make sure I pointed that out. So I'm going to, give me a second because tech is not my forte. Let me get this, this pulled up here.
Nope, Councilmember Kirkpatrick, you cannot play disco music right now. So I don't have it right here. Let me scroll down here.
And I, I would, I'll call the question.
Move it along.
Let me just pull my information here because it's, it got stuff in the papers here. Oh, here it is.
Just give her a minute.
I have requested some tech training back in twenty twenty-one.
You've actually provided that five times to you.
It was, no, that's.
Yes, it may have been more than five times.
It was in a paper form. I'm, well, I'm, I'm trying to pull this up so I can get.
Item F seventeen, page number four forty-six.
I'm sure there's probably more efficient way of.
There is. There's a menu that you can navigate to it in a second.
Okay.
Okay, oh shoot. Let me get this here.
Right.
But there's a lot of, a lot of residents who have different levels of tech too. So this is for those who have neurodevelopmental.
Five hours ago, you pulled this item. So
I did, and it's.
Seconds to get to it. Otherwise, we're calling the question and moving on and you've already spoken.
I think I'm still within my eight minutes here.
Yes, but when you call the question, you've already spoken. So we unless any of my.
I'm going to call the question.
Item, I'm alright.
Let me get, let me.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, say nay. Alright, did you vote?
I did not vote because I'm pulling.
We already are voting. Do you vote yea or nay? Or abstain?
I did not.
Just yea or nay or abstain. Right, no vote for Councilmember Dennis on that item. Alright, we're moving on to ordinance readings and we have one second reading, council, or excuse me, Mr. Spindler Craig, the annexation petition. Number CD twenty twenty-three zero zero five ANX by Meyer Companies.
Thank you, Madam President. Item K one. An ordinance annexing to the city of Rochester approximately five point one three acres located at southwest corner of sixty-fifth Street Northwest and Thirty-seventh Avenue Northwest.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Keen?
Nothing to add.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Alright, so we don't have any tabled items. We don't have, yeah. Just other business. Anybody have other business?
I have other business.
Go ahead.
Well, I am going to give up for a second on this thing. I, I feel this is a clear illustration on the lack of sensitivity to different abilities. And we cannot claim to be a DEI city when this is what the treatment of people who are openly struggling. And it, it could have been an easy fix. You could have showed me quickly.
What is, what is the, is the topic for other business?
Other, thank you. Okay, I have several topics under other business. Thank you. So
One at a time.
First topic on other business is the travel training. We, the council voted to, back in December, to limit travel, like divide up a pot of money that has been a pot for, since, I don't know, for, for many, many years for city council. And we had in the, in the our pots, there's several council members who have remaining balances. Several only used a, a small amount. And prior to the vote on October sixteenth, I believe, I have to make sure I get this date right, prior to the vote to limit, to not allow the funding, some, you know, council members could have transferred funding. They could have, I mean, we had the money. We didn't have to touch any kind of contingency or any kind of tax, any levy. But because of that, I tried to personally raise funds to go and I was unsuccessful. It's an incredible difficulty to raise thirteen hundred dollars on a fixed budget. And so I wasn't able to attend National Lake of Cities, which I've heard from the mayor. It was a very beneficial conference. And on top of that, the conference fee was non-refundable. So not only was I not able to attend, but that literally, that money close to seven hundred dollars absolutely was wasted. And I find that incredibly sad.
Point of order, Councilmember, we did provide some information to you that actually that ticket was purchased as a non-refundable ticket and as is the course with airlines. They provide that back to the named party on the ticket. And so what was provided to you is that that six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I'm not talking about the ticket. The ticket is credited.
And you also had eleven days from the time that the city council denied the, the additional training funds to make that decision and it could have been canceled for only a one hundred dollar cancellation fee, which you referenced in your email.
It was, I'm, I'm pointing out, it shows, again, reflects that those who aren't able to finance their own, those council members, I, I'm not going to say, you know, but they're not all council members.
Point of order, we already voted on this.
This, I wanted to, but this is an update of the travel training situation.
Talked about this ad nauseam. Move on to the next topic or we're going to ask, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn. Go.
Okay, I want to bring up consistency. On November sixth, the vote on the camping ban. There was a situation where the, it was called the question by Councilmember Keen prior to me being able to ask questions of staff. And it was told by President Carlson that I could ask questions and I wasn't timed eight minutes. I was able to ask all of my questions, which I appreciate immensely. And then I still got my eight minutes to address the ban. That happened on November sixth. And then just tonight, the same situation happened. Councilmember Keen had the question called prior to questions being able to be asked of staff. And I was under the same assumption that was what was said in November sixth and asking my questions, not knowing, I feel consistency.
Noted, move on.
Needs to be addressed because I think that has been an injustice to residents. And then.
Finally, go ahead.
And I, I, I feel this is very condescending and I, I do not appreciate being rushed. I have a few issues I believe are important. The camping ban is another, I have a lot of questions on that, but I, I will just jump into it. One of the questions brought up was the role of the president because on school board, the, the school board chair will address emails that are addressed to the entire school board. There is, so I, I just wanted some clarification on that because sometimes residents will address the entire city council. And I was told by other elected officials, it's the role of the chair. And I just wanted to clarify that role here on the city council.
It's not the role of the chair. The school board is structured totally differently. They're all at-large representatives. We are not. Many times ward constituents reach out to one of you. I do not usually respond to a ward-specific question. If it's a higher level question, I'll respond, but not on behalf of us unless we've taken action. Thanks. Moving on.
Okay, I, I, I think that might be something to address because a lot of constituents don't, what their address is, we don't know what ward. And when they address an email to the entire city council, instead of getting different responses and council members don't know if they responded because we're not CCing each other's in, I think that might be something to look at modeling emails that do fall under a broad canopy and have all the council members without their addresses noted. Might be good to have a, a central person to respond so that's consistent information.
Member, I just would point out that you have currently in your preliminary budget, a three-one-one system, which would allow people to bypass that completely and get their question answered. It's also why we always recommend that when you forward something, that you include either the deputy city administrator or the city manager, city administrator, so that we can make sure that we're funneling those properly. And oftentimes, we answer them directly, which is the most expedient manner to connect a resident with the answers to their concerns.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're answered because there are a lot of emails that are addressed to everyone on the council. And I don't know if I'm supposed to be answering it if it's already been answered by someone else. I'm just looking for some clarification. So if.
You're always welcome to forward those to me and I will make sure they're addressed.
We are independent elected officials and a lot of times residents, because we work for them, they.
Point of order. I mean, again, you, you made your point. Let, let's, what's the next?
I would like to also address the idea of the city administrator used words like information symmetry. And I believe it's kind of a little bit vague on to know what, we addressed this a little bit, but didn't at the very, very, very end as we're rushing to move from another topic. But there is a lot of information that I don't believe is given to the entire council. I know from my experience, not being able to have meetings or having quick meetings and I, I feel there might be some good guidelines to put to make sure that council members have the same consistent information if addressed. So I.
Member Dennis, all of those are outlined in your council rules or procedure and code of conduct that were actually just updated this evening that incorporates that.
I, I think this is a little different than, okay. And then another notion was today I had a legislative meeting. We've had a lot of meetings. It's after midnight for anyone who is watching. And the legislative meeting was to talk about bonding priorities and, and, and I feel that should have been done in a study session because not only did we have to do three separate meetings for open meeting law, which I believe wastes taxpayer money because each staff, there's staff who make very good wages. It, it utilizes their time over and over and over again to have the same information. Plus, the residents do not have the ability to have it transparent to, to everyone. So I was sitting there alone with four, four staff. And I heard that they're going to be repeating this. And I think residents who have spoken upset that their voices aren't heard would benefit for those kind of meetings should be transparent.
Mayor and council members, I just want to point out that those were small briefing sessions to get individual feedback. They've all been completed at this point. And that item, as was shared in those meetings, will be coming forward on December eleventh under reports and recommendations where that happens in, in public at the council dais.
I just feel like it should residents should know what their representatives feel and, and.
And that will happen on December eleventh.
Well, I think transparency. And when it comes to. Videos, video, I, I, subjectiveness, we didn't cover this, but I, I, I do feel that every council meeting should be videoed and every council member should have the right to address residents' concerns. And I will continue to be doing so because that is my job, I, I believe, is to so that I want to mention, mention that, that was not got, was, I was cut off. I'm not getting my. be, so that I want to mention, mention that, that was not got, was, I was cut off. I'm not getting my eight minutes um, to to a, to have that information. So I I have a, an incredible amount of stuff about conflict of interest, things that I've been reading um, that I think our city council is not doing well. And uh, open meeting law, BCCing emails, I know some.
Again, a point of order here for the president. I, Councilmember Dennis thinks open, other business is a place where she just talks about what she's interested in. This is supposed to be city business that's leads towards council action. If, can we, I, do you?
These are all city business.
Yeah, it's also, it's all your, it's, it's all.
Councilmember Kirkpatrick?
Thank you. Um, I believe I had consulted with uh, Clark Geisler maybe a year or two ago about uh, the potential for uh, timing each one of us when we're speaking so that it's just kind of logging all of our times when we're speaking. And I'm wondering if the updated system has the capacity to do that, and if that's something that maybe the council would want to consider in the future, just even in the, in the programming we have, easy kind of a thing to do. I would love to get back to you on that.
Thank you so much.
I think this is a time for issues to be brought up called other business. We, we used to have six of them a month. Now we only have two. And I feel that just because people do not like what I have to say or what other people have to say, doesn't mean that they should be silenced. There is a a wonderful thing quoted in another.
Again, point of order. It's not that we don't like what you're saying, is you're just going on without coming to a point. So if you mind me make a quick point.
I'm bringing up concerns that because.
Well, thirty two at night.
Which we should not have happen. It shouldn't be this packed agenda. Uh, I am bringing up concerns not to have a lengthy discussion on each, but just to bring them into awareness that I would like some feedback on this. So I wanted to bring it out because when um, other things have been used in emails, they have not.
I would just share that these have been asked multiple times, both in public as well as privately, and they've been answered.
Uh, I disagree.
Talked about these many, many times over the course of three years.
Incess, like, most meetings, the same.
All of the same.
Discussion. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn. Second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned.